Six, two thousand and nine. Moved by Counsel Fisher, seconded by Counsel Carrio. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion is carried. Thank you. This time I'm going to ask for any disclosures of a pecuniary interest by the members of council. Once again, any disclosures of a pecuniary interest by members of council? Having seen none, we'll move on to the general discussion. The first discussion is the general purposes budget. I'm going to call on our acting CAO, Mr. Ed Doolovic, to outline the information.
Thank you, your worship. You'll be happy to know there is no PowerPoint from me this evening. Just to give you a recap, as the council will recall at their last meeting where we dealt with the budget, with the final cuts that were made, that were moved that night, we did achieve a zero percent budget increase. There were some questions, the council had some questions about some potential further cuts. Staff did subsequently send an email out to members of council looking, you know, if there were any further questions that they had. I know myself, Ken Burden and finance staff have emailed, had conversations with several councilors. More of it more was to get clarification, answer some questions, and as a result, I know a number of them, they didn't have any further cuts to make. So, at this time, we simply wait for council's direction on how to proceed. You know, staff is looking for a motion to approve the budget this evening.
Thank you. Counsel Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm prepared to make both those motions for the general purposes and the municipal utility. I'd like to thank the members of staff that sat with me the last week and went over the concerns I had ahead and had my budget binder the last time, but I am confident in the answers that they gave me, and I'd like to make a motion to move both budgets.
Do you have a second to that motion? Counsel Carrio? Any discussion or comments? Pardon? Both? Both? Any questions or comments? Counsel Peter Angelo?
Worship, I thought that there was a presentation Mr. Burden was going to make on the utility budget.
Mr. Burden? Pleasure, council.
I'd like to hear the presentation.
Okay, perhaps can we deal, Counsel Iannone, let's deal with the first issue first.
Yeah, I'll move the general purposes budget.
Seconded by Counsel Carrio, is that correct? All right, any further discussions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, please hold your hands up. Motion is carried. You asked me. Thank you very much. The next item then, of course, is the municipal utility budget, and you'd like to hear from Mr. Burden.
Mayor and members of council, tonight, this is a introduction of the municipal utility budget. It's like the general purposes budget in that it's an operating budget. There are two separate funds that are in the municipal utility budget. It's the water and the sewer fund. It's totally rate supported. There are no property taxes included in these two funds. You'll notice in the chart, which is a very sort of high-level summary, that we have two kinds of sources of costs. There are regional costs, and that's for water purchases and for sewer treatment. And of course, then there's city costs, and that's the cost for operating the distribution systems. There's also two kinds of revenues. There's volumetric revenues, or a rate per cubic meter, and there's also fixed charges, that's the monthly charge. And depending on the size of the meter will be the amount of the monthly charge. In other words, the larger the meter, the higher the monthly charge. Total budget includes a water cost of approximately nineteen point two million, and a sewer cost of approximately twenty point four million, a total of thirty-nine point six million. You'll notice on the next slide that the impact of the regional water costs are basically as a result of declining water volumes. Dean, if you could. Thank you. Actually, last year was a peculiar year, and it was a very wet year, and as a result, you'll notice that we have a comment about decreasing water volumes. It wasn't just two thousand and eight, in fact, for the last three or four years, we've seen a decrease in the usage of water. And that's more so the demand from our ICI sector, that's the industrial, commercial, institutional. Lower volumes require higher volumetric rates because you still have to raise the same amount of revenues to pay the costs. The change in the regional billing is significant. Over the past several years, we have had a one-hundred percent volumetric charge for the regional water purchases. In other words, for every meter, cubic meter of water that we use, we pay a per-cubic-meter volumetric rate to the region. That has since changed. On March twenty-sixth, the change in the regional billing changed from one-hundred percent volumetric to twenty-five percent fixed, and seventy-five percent volumetric. Is this significant? Well, yes, because as you'll see later on, we're now collecting volumetric revenues to pay fixed costs, and that introduces a risk, a risk of collecting enough revenues in order to pay the fixed costs. The actual increase in the regional cost is approximately one million for water purchases. We also have an increase in the sewer costs. The increase here is not as much, it's about two hundred thousand dollars. But you'll also notice that the regional billing has changed here as well. It started in two thousand and eight, and instead of stepping from volumetric to fixed, there was one complete change. In other words, we went from totally volumetric to totally fixed. I mentioned earlier that two thousand and eight was a wet year. Low water volumes, because people weren't using the water, meant lower revenues, and because the sewer is a percentage of the water volumes, we incurred a deficit in two thousand and eight. That value is still being calculated, but it is in the range of about five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars.
Excuse me, Mr. Burden, just a question by Counsel Peter Angelo to that point.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I just had a question. The actual change in regional billing, I mean, how does that affect the municipality from the standpoint of conservation? Does that give us less of an ability to have our users conserve water because the charge is more fixed?
That is correct. One of the issues of utilizing a volumetric rate is to reward conservation. However, if your costs are becoming more fixed, then there's no incentive to actually conserve water, or to find water efficiencies in your processing operations. Essentially, water, regardless of volume, is the same charge, so there is no incentive when you have fixed costs.
Does the region have any plans to, I guess, refund us for the water meters that we put in there?
I have not heard that comment, no.
You know, your worship, while I find it somewhat fiscally irresponsible to move to a fixed charge, I find it environmentally irresponsible from the standpoint of conservation. I mean, now you're not even giving the users the ability to conserve or to save on the water consumption if all of the charges come from the region. It just doesn't make sense. It's going backwards.
That is why staff is introducing stabilization reserves. Yes, we do have them, and they have been built up over the past years as a result of some surpluses in our water and sewer funds. But what we're asking here is that we build in yearly contributions into stabilization reserves. The idea here is to supplement the lower revenues when we incur them as a result of wet years. Our reserves are currently watered at eight-hundred-and-seventy thousand, and sanitary sewer at one point three million. You seem ample enough, but when in two thousand and eight, we're going to draw down by some half a million dollars, it will not take long on recurring deficits that we would use up the reserves quite quickly. So the additional reserves are needed, and really, we're trying to anticipate future potential deficits. You see here that we've got a water reserve of two percent, around two hundred thousand, a sewer reserve of four percent, about four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. This has the effect of increasing the volumetric rate by about three point three percent. So let's look at the actual proposed water and sewer volumetric rates. They are rates per cubic meter. They are designed to collect sufficient revenues to pay the regional costs and to contribute to reserves. The sewer rates are constructed as a percentage of the water rate. You'll see off to the right that the total increase on a percentage basis, and this affects all rate pairs, is just under thirteen percent, twelve point nine percent to be exact. Let's have a look at the impacts of our city costs. These are the distribution costs for our water and sewer pipe systems. The total increase of three point eight percent is roughly six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Of that amount, there's three hundred and sixty-four thousand for water, and another two hundred and sixty-three thousand for sewer. For water, that represents a four point two percent increase, and for sewer, a three point four percent increase. One of the major increases that we incurred in our labor cost was to move the cost of infrastructure support personnel from the general purposes budget over to the water and sewer funds. This is done intentionally because we've, in examining the work of that group, about two-thirds of their costs are actually devoted to water and sewer system research and development. That's worth around three hundred and some odd thousand. There's also increased costs for billing and receipting. There's asphalt patching, inspection, repairs, and the like. One interesting note is our capital contributions have not changed. In other words, we've left them constant at approximately nine point one million dollars. For water, it's four point five, and for sewer, it's four point six million. No change in the capital contributions. However, there is an impact on some other revenues that you should be made aware of. We did have a contribution for about three years from the Ontario Power Generation. As you may recall, we received a grant of approximately three hundred thousand dollars about three years ago. That grant had to do with the tunnel that's being built, and/or drilled, and the money was to be used to offset the sewer surcharge, which we are currently not collecting through the water bill rate. So we have come to the end of that grant. The other item that we need to identify for you, and Dean, if you could change the slide for us, thank you, is the fire hydrant cost of two hundred and seventy-four thousand. One of the ways that we resolved the zero percent levy in the general purposes budget was by not transferring from general purposes this amount of money, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, to the water budget. The reason we did that was to try and help out the general purposes, but as a result, we don't have that revenue in the water area, so it's a lost revenue. The combined impact of both the costs and these reduction of revenues is approximately one million dollars. So what do the proposed water and sewer fixed charges look like? This chart represents a regular residential homeowner's account. You can see that the increase for the water and sewer rate moves from forty-one dollars and ninety cents per month to forty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. That's six point nine percent. Should not be fooled by this, because this represents the base rate. We have much larger meters, which are utilized by our commercial, institutional, industrial sector, and there is a schedule attached to the report that outlines those rates. But back to the residential, it means an increase of almost three dollars per month, or almost thirty-five dollars for the year. In the report, we identified some of the dollar impacts for various sizes of meters. This chart tries to look at some range of use for residential uses, so we have water use at ten cubic meters per month, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. And off to the right, you can see the dollar change in their water sewer bill over the year. So if you're a low water use, your increase would be approximately fifty-eight dollars. I think the important note to point here is the percentage. It's roughly averaging nine percent. That is a significant increase over the year. Let's move to some large volume users. And when we look at the percentages here, the percentages range from eleven to over twelve percent. Again, it's a user range, and we have to identify that what's pushing this is the volumetric rate increase. You recall that that increase was twelve point nine percent, and the fixed rate is six point nine percent. The actual increase for a user obviously depends on the usage, but suffice it to say, a high-volume user is going to pay more percentage-wise than a low-volume user. How can we reduce some of these reductions? How can we reduce some of the expenditures? Let's move to that slide, and we'll give you a few ideas. One of the first things that you may consider is, do we really need to contribute to the new stabilization reserve? Yes, it's always good to do that. It's always good to build reserves. But we are realizing that this year may not be the year to do it, so the first thing that you might consider is not contributing to the new stabilization reserve. Another area would be the contracted services. Now, the primary use of contracted services is the weeping tile disconnect program, and we've had several areas in our city that are reliant upon this program to relieve the flooding issues. So this may not be a good pick, but we do have three-quarters of a million, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, in the budget for the program you might want to consider reducing slightly. Again, capital contributions. This represents about one-half a percent. Yes, five percent, sorry, five percent. And the four hundred and ninety thousand would be an impact to the capital budget. You'll notice that it adds up to one point four million, and that was done deliberately. The reason is, we were trying to reduce the residential impact down to five percent. Try to make it more affordable, even though five percent is well above the consumer price So what is the impact on users? Well, if we reduce the city costs by approximately one million, and we further reduce the capital contributions by four hundred thousand, so one point four million, by the way, that four hundred thousand would be actually used to offset some of the regional increase. We'll just change the slide there. You can see that the residential increase ranges from three to five percent. What does that represent? Roughly twenty-two dollars in the low end to forty-eight dollars on the high end. So in other words, whereas we were predicting something like sixty to a hundred, we've dropped it to twenty-two to forty-eight. However, it doesn't help as much for the non-residential increase. We're still looking at quite high single-digit increases, seven to nine percent. In fact, it would take approximately one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in fixed cost reduction, that is, reducing your capital, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, for every one percent in the fixed rate percentage, in the fixed rate. So remember that number, one hundred and twenty thousand. So what were we to do to take it down to zero? Just ask. Thank you. Well, once again, we're going to reduce the city costs by about a million dollars, and we're going to further reduce the capital contribution by one point six million. This effectively achieves a zero percent expense increase. But you can see the hit in capital contributions, almost one point eight million dollars. This will definitely have an impact on the water sewer capital projects. The capital budget binder is with us tonight, and perhaps later on, you might want to speak to both Jeff, Director of Municipal Works, and Ed Doolovic, about which projects it might impact. So how does that impact our residential and high-volume users? Just change the slide there. Well, it really depends on usage. Obviously, the residential users get a bonus. In fact, many, in fact, most of our residential users would actually see a decrease in their overall water and sewer bill over two thousand and eight. But for the higher volumes, we are still incurring four to eight percent increase, and again, that's a result of the volumetric rate. It's very difficult to get the volumetric rate impact down. The only way you can do that is actually to transfer in reserves, to use reserves as a stabilizing force to reduce that volumetric rate. And how much would it take? Well, it would take approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for every one percent of volumetric rate decrease. So there's two numbers, one hundred and twenty thousand for fixed, and two hundred and fifteen thousand for volumetric.
Mr. Burden, there's another question from a member of council. Counsel Iannone?
Thank you, and that would come from the capital budget that we have yet to pass.
That's correct.
So we'd have to make those types of cuts.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So now we move to our last slide, and it's actually a council decision. The regional rates for the water and sewer have been passed. In fact, they were made effective March the first. For capital budget, it depends on the water and sewer capital contributions. We cannot move forward in this two thousand and nine year unless we know how much from the water and sewer operating budgets will be transferred to the capital budget. Our city rates would actually be made effective May the first, that's this Friday. If we have passage tonight, otherwise, we lose a month, and it'll be June the first before we can make the rates effective. How does that impact? If it's made effective on this Friday, then we can capture the water usage for the month of April for our monthly accounts. We've lost March, but we've captured the monthly users for the month of April, and we can capture the bimonthly users going back to March the first. So we're very anxious that council consider these matters tonight, and to propose a passage of some form of the municipal utility budget.
Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo, request questions?
Thanks, your worship.
Just in the last slide here, it says that capital budget depends on the water and sewer capital contributions. And I know that a couple of slides before that, Mr. Burden was talking about having an overall reduction in capital from the municipal utility budget. So my question then would be, if council were to cut capital funds, can we get somewhat of an idea of any of the capital projects that might be impacted by that?
I would turn that question over to Ed Doolovic.
Mr. Doolovic, sorry.
Yes, through your worship. Staff did prepare a list, if council would like to see it, because we did talk about this before, and when we last were going to present to council regarding an option of looking at capital budget reductions, and we do have a list here that staff has prepared. If you'd like, I could pass it around, and you can see what potentially could be impacted in two thousand and nine, what projects would be impacted.
Is that about nine million dollars, is that correct?
Yeah, it's not quite nine million.
Less.
And what you'll see in the list there, it doesn't add up to the nine point one million, and why that is, is that we have a number of projects listed in two thousand and nine that are carriers from two thousand and eight, so we do need some funding to fund those projects, and the expenses have already occurred. So we've identified about seven point three million dollars in projects in two thousand and nine that is dependent on the funding from the capital budget. So taking away those projects, we've already spent money, and we need funding. Any cuts that council would propose, and as I said, we did identify some funding cuts previously, it would jeopardize one of the projects on the list here.
Okay, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Your worship, just in theory, and I mean, I know that we're going to talk about the stimulus fund later on tonight. I mean, if any of the projects here, that because we, I guess, decreased the amount of capital that we transferred from the municipal utility budget, if any of these projects are affected to the tune that they cannot go forward this year, would it be reasonable then to say that we can't fund them out of our capital budget this year, and that they would be eligible for the stimulus fund going forward?
Mr. Doolovic?
Through your worship, that's a question that staff have been wrestling with, but I feel confident in that we did table this report prior to the stimulus fund rules being released, where we did talk about a way of achieving a reduction in the water and sewer rate going up was through a reduction in the capital expenditure. We suggested a quantum, however, council may not have been comfortable with that, as it still resulted in a fairly large increase of, I believe, three to five percent on the residential side, and then higher on the commercial side. So it was just a suggestion for forward, there may be more, there may be less, but that would have been a council decision, but we were just trying to give council some options of what cuts could be made in order to bring the impact down, because staff did realize at the time that the increases, if we were simply to pass through what the region gave us, and some of the increases staff were suggesting, that it wouldn't be palatable.
So should we be advised, Mr. Burden, that from what Mr. Doolovic said, that each one percent reduction is two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars?
With the volumetric rate, yes. On the fixed rate, it's less, it's one hundred and twenty thousand.
So one hundred and twenty for fixed?
Remember, we have a two-part rate structure, that's why we're giving both amounts for consideration.
Okay. Counsel, you still have the floor?
Yeah, thank you, worship. And just to follow up, I guess, as I look at number two on here, I see Drummond Road reconstruction, and I know that on our sheets that staff gave us in respect of the infrastructure stimulus fund, there's also the Drummond Road reconstruction on there. So I would take it that what's on the sheet that Mr. Doolovic just handed out would be phase one?
Mr. Doolovic?
Yes, through your worship, that is phase one, and what was suggested for the ISF funding was phase two, that was in the cap eight of your binders, so that it was a future phase. I'd have to look at it, but I think it goes down to Murray Street, the first phase, from Levees Lake down to Murray.
And, sorry, what was the project cost for phase one?
Phase one, three point six, something like that. I'll look it up quickly.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah, two point eight million dollars.
Two point eight. Okay. Your worship, phase one and phase two, then?
Two point eight, three point four, come out to a total project cost of six point two million. Would it be reasonable then to assume, Mr. Doolovic, that if cuts were made to the capital contribution from the municipal utility budget, that we would be able to put the entire Drummond Road project forward under the infrastructure stimulus fund?
Mr. Doolovic?
Through your worship, yes, in that, as we talked about before, this wasn't a matter of consideration for council a number of weeks ago. It was tabled with council, the report that talked about potential cuts to the capital program, and if council does go ahead and implements those type of cuts, then it does jeopardize this project or any other project on the list that we just handed out for two thousand and nine, because the dollars aren't there, we simply can't go ahead with those projects.
And the project is ready to go right now?
The EA has been completed. I know we're working on some, I think we're in the midst of working on design drawings for phase one, phase two is further on, but again, with any type of project, we'd have to go and complete the design.
Okay. Your worship, that would be a major infrastructure project, I would say.
Certainly. It would sure would. I have Counsel Wing and Counsel Iannone.
Thank you. If we not put the Drummond Road project for infrastructure funding, that's before.
Mr. Doolovic?
Through your worship, yes, we did, and we didn't get any funding for it.
So why are we confident that we would get funding for it this time, when we didn't the last time?
For the infrastructure stimulus fund, the rules are, aren't as stringent as some of the other programs that we had, what the federal government, provincial governments are looking for, my understanding is they're looking for hard infrastructure projects, this does qualify, and they want to move quickly. So this is one of the projects we feel that we can look at, try to getting in the ground by the fall of this year, starting construction activity.
Okay, I can consider moving that one, as Counsel Peter Angelo is suggesting, but overall, I really took to heart. overall, I really took to heart what staff said on page three about the idea of, it's under expenditures summary, second paragraph, the idea of reducing capital or certain expenditures. Reducing the stabilization amount would have an impact on revenue security, and I don't think that's something we want to, we want a chance. Reducing capital projects, we would possibly fall farther behind, and my fear with the Drummond Road project is that if we don't do that this year, then, you know, we're still waiting next year to get it done, looking for the money then, and the same with any other capital projects, I mean, you know, Rose Water Sewer, we own those things, we got to keep them up, and we know that if you don't catch roads and rehabilitate them, then you got to rebuild, costs four to five times more. You know, water and sewer, you know, those become more costly as you wait as well. And the other one, the contracted services, staff are suggesting that it would have an impact on annual maintenance programs, and I don't want any impact on annual maintenance programs to our infrastructure. I think it's far too important, and it's far too costly if we don't, and that's something we really need to keep up. So, with the possible exception of Drummond Road, and I think I still need to be totally convinced, I would not be in favor of reducing any of the expenditures for the reasons staff outlined.
Thank you. Counselor Anoney.
My question was asked by Victor.
Pardon?
My question was.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, Your Worship, I mean, just a point of clarification, the deadline for the application is May first, and when is the federal government going to get back to us, and whether or not we can see funding for it?
Mr. Doolick.
Through Your Worship, what we've heard in talking with our colleagues, our understanding is in early June, because the government is focused on getting money out onto the street and where it's going, as I described the last time we met, with both the infrastructure stimulus fund and the Building Canada Fund, they're giving priority, and this doesn't mean you have to, but they are giving the priority to projects that will have 50% of the funding spent by March 31st of 2010, and you need to have all of the money spent by March 31st, 2011. So, there is a real impetus on the part of the federal provincial government to get this money out there, and so they need to give us a quick turnaround time on these projects, because the longer they wait, the longer we have to wait, because it's very clear, you can't make any claims on expenditures before they announce whether you've got your project. So, in its policy, you're going to wait, and so our understanding is it'd be a very, very quick turnaround time. Matter of fact, I know the application form for the infrastructure stimulus fund is quite simple, they're really focusing on the dollar amount, when you can get started, and how much the project is, and a little bit about the benefits, but it's very focused on stimulating the economy.
And curious help again, Your Worship, to Mr. Dooliver, are we already prepared to move forward with Phase One?
Yes, there's been a fair bit of work, and I understand, the most difficult part of anything is getting the environmental assessment work done, and that has been done, and we've been focusing on the first phase of that project and getting the design drawn.
So, we wouldn't meet the criteria, then, we would spend half the money by May of 2010?
I think we're confident that we can get quite a bit of the money spent before the March 2010 deadline, and if we went with Phase Two also, we can get it all spent by 2011, March 3rd versus 2011.
Good to hear.
Thank you. Counselor Maves.
Is that a concern here, just looking at the expenditure reduction considerations, I'm just wondering, are we just passing the water bill over to the tax bill, are we just disguising these numbers, or is it? Mr. Burden, can you answer that, are we just passing a water bill over to the taxes, or is it?
Through Your Worship, there is no property tax support in either the water or the sewer rates, I'm not sure what you mean by passing through to property taxes.
Well, I'm just saying, when you're saying the capital contributions, the stabilization reserve, and that, that's all in water accounts, so it's not affecting any of the taxes, I'm just concerned that when we shift from one account to the other, and we're still paying the same. The other thing is, I'm just wondering too, on these costs, what we're going to try and save and cut things back to zero, is this going to double next year, is this going to cost us down the road?
We are anticipating, obviously, annual increases. Again, the contribution from capital, if it is significantly reduced this year, would have to be made up next year if you want to continue the same kind of capital program. So, in other words, if you reduce capital contributions by $1.8 million, that won't be in the budget next year unless you add it back in.
Now, my only concern is, if we cut something out this year, are we going to pay for a double next year? If it's just not in there, it's nothing to be concerned with?
Well, it depends if we spend the money, I think, on the capital improvements.
That's correct, and perhaps Mr. Dooliver or Jeff Holman could speak to the future uses of water and sewer funds for 2010 and 2011. I know that in our capital budget forecast, we are anticipating that there always ever would be approximately $9.1 million coming from water and sewer over to capital budget, and perhaps you could comment.
Mr. Doolick, please.
Yeah, through Your Worship, just quickly on that, I mean, it's always difficult to predict in the future now, for doubling the cost, it wouldn't double the cost on replacing that piece of infrastructure, what you may see is some increased costs, and I'm thinking, for instance, in the water mains, if you've got an old water main out there that's breaking, the rate of breakage can increase, it takes longer to replace, so therefore, you're paying more for your staff to go up and do the fix to the water mains, and usually, it happens on the weekend or at night where you're paying overtime. So, you'll see those type of costs go up. On the sewer side, what you may see is, as we're trying to reduce the incidence of basement flooding, there could be more basement flooding, the basement flooding will continue because it's going to take longer to get out there and fix those problems. So, those are the type of things that you're dealing with by not spending those dollars, it just takes longer to get that work done.
Thank you. I have Counselor Kerrio, Counselor Peter Angelo, and Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Worship. I think it would be irresponsible not to try and get this money from the stimulus fund. If it's there, if we have a chance to get it, we should take the chance. This equates to me, like, you're driving a car, can you get another year out of your car? It's running, eh, you might have to spend a few more dollars to keep it going to repair it if we don't do it this year, but it's not that the water mains are junk, is that right, Mr. Doolick? They're not junk, they're not completely falling apart, it's not going to cost twice as much if we have to push this project off to next year. It might be a little bit more money, but.
Through Your Worship, I mean, yeah, who knows where the cost is going to go, but it's not going to be double, as I said earlier, where your expenses are going to be, if it's a really bad water main that you've put off replacing, you're going to incur some more repair costs, but I mean, those are the ones that we're doing first, to try to deal with those ones, and again, on the sewer side, it's the basement flooding. So, I don't see a doubling, you may pay a little bit more next year, costs escalate, those type of things, but at the same time, you could see a decrease, as we've seen, as we'll talk later on, if anyone asks on the consent agenda, there are a number of projects that the city has left, and because of the economy, there's a significant reduction in those costs over last year, because there's a lot of contractors looking for work, and there's a lot of private sector work that's not out there, so, you know, we're seeing 25, 30% reduction in costs because of that.
I'm assuming that when the engineering staff is suggesting to us that we could put something off, that they wouldn't be doing that if it was to keep a water main that was so bad, that it was giving us that much trouble, or a sewer that was so bad. I'm assuming that you're pretty good with this, that you'd like to take the chance and try to get this stimulus money, and that you're not giving us advice that we put off a job that absolutely has to be done, so that's my assumption.
Through Your Worship, yes, it would be irresponsible of staff to put off projects that have a potential impact to the public out there. You know, staff's comfortable with Drummond Road, something that we wouldn't be comfortable with, and it's not even on this list, and we were talking about Kayler Road, where we've had some flooding in there, and we really do need to do something there. So, you know, that's the type of projects we're looking at. I mean, we face that decision every year, because there's only so much money we have. You know, if we had 18, there's 20 million, we'd go and spend it, but we have 9.1, you have to prioritize your projects, and you always look for the areas that are in the worst shape and that need immediate attention, and that's what you focus your efforts on.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Peter Angelo, Counselor Thompson, and Counselor Wing.
Thanks, Your Worship.
Just a question about the slide again, the slide has a total reduction in capital contributions of 1. almost $9 million.
I mean, if council were to approve that, am I correct then to assume that we would be looking at this sheet that Mr. Dooliver just handed out, and be thinking for ourselves that 1.9 million has to come out of this list?
Right, Mr. Doolick.
Through Your Worship, yes, that's correct, it would come out of these lists of projects here.
So, some of these projects then would not be able to go forward?
Yes, if council were to go with the full $1.9 million, staff would then have to sit down and reassess the projects, and again, we'd have to look at what are the projects that need to be done, what projects could be put off.
And I guess then, through you, again, Your Worship, over to Mr. Burden, were you saying earlier that one percent equates to 215,000, or was that on the volumetric side only?
That's only on the volumetric side, and that would involve actually transferring from reserves to help supplement the payment of the regional costs. On the fixed side, it's $120,000 for each reduction of one percent in the fixed rate.
Okay, thank you.
So, that would probably be about 25 to 28% reduction, Counselor, on the total of 7.3, fair to say? If you look at two-sevenths roughly, 2 million, 1.9 on 7.3.
I guess what I'm wondering, Your Worship, is how much, and I know it says achieving a zero percent expense increase.
So, if you cut it off?
How much, do you think some of the capital in there affect the overall rates? That's what I'm looking for.
Sure, maybe somewhere in between, is that what you're suggesting, possibly?
Maybe somewhere in between.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wondering how that's going to affect the overall rates.
Okay, that's fair, we're not subsidizing the entire, sure, okay. I have Counselor Thompson, Counselor Wing, and Counselor Anoney.
I guess we don't have to push any buttons anymore, eh? Anyway, yeah, mine's always on. The question, how do we prioritize this, what is the impact if the suggestion to defer Drummond Road? How do we know whether we're making the right decision with respect to this? I know, I see the dollars and cents situation, but what about the impact on the other suggested projects?
The question is really?
Yeah.
Mr. Doolick.
Through Your Worship, yeah, that is difficult, and that was something we would have to sit down with staff, and unfortunately, we don't have a lot of time to deal with that because of the infrastructure funding and need applications is on May first. If it's something that gets, feels comfortable to leave the staff, if you pick a dollar figure of 500, 800, or whatever it is, and then look at the projects, or if council says, well, let's try to make an application for Drummond Road and see what happens, if we hear in June and we don't get the dollars, then we would, you know, staff could come back with council saying, okay, we have less dollars, we need to go ahead with Drummond Road, here are some, here are ways that staff are suggesting that we account for that $800,000 reduction.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just because I've been, had meetings and talked to about this over the past, I don't know how many years, the Warren Creek situation about the realignment, where does that stand in this budget? There appears to be, we put, in fact, 12 point some odd million dollars, we're discussing tonight, venture of the extension of the sewer and the pumping station, and yet, here's an opportunity to move ahead with the realignment of the creek, and we're not, we don't even have that in the five-year budget to move ahead so we can collect development charges to get back, and particularly, when the people tell me that they're willing to front-end the costs with respect to this.
Through Your Worship, that is subject to negotiations with the landowners, yes, there's been discussion of front-ending, but they do expect to be paid back, and that becomes a financing issue for us as to how quickly they need to be paid back, where are the dollars going to come from, if we don't get development happening, we don't get those DC revenues, but that's something that staff needs to sit down and meet with those developers to talk about what they'll front-end, what the payment terms will be, what the impact is, and then we would have to come back to this council.
I understand there's a substantial amount of flexibility, as you would think there would be, because they want to get this underway, and I, three years, and then five years, so if it's that flexible, but I just want some assurance that we know that the staff is going to do this, to see if we can take advantage of that, and I understand that if it doesn't happen, it even affects Garner Estates to the north of McLeod Road with respect to the development there, is that accurate?
Yes, it does have an impact, and that's why staff are meeting with the developer, we've met internally on it, but at the end of the day, we will be back to this council to talk about what the agreement is, what it means from a financing perspective, and what are the impacts to the city.
Will this, the decision-making process tonight negatively impact on that, or is that something we can do anyway in the future if they're front-ending it?
I think the biggest issue on this one is on the storm side, again, it's all related to DCs, and that's really where the funding needs to come from, and then the question becomes, if they do front-end it, what are the payment terms that we have to get, that they want back? Where will the money come from if we don't have the development proceed, because then the city, the city would then, as per any agreement, they may have to give dollars to the developer, so that's something we'll be reviewing, and we need to bring back to this council so they understand the full implications of any type of front-ending agreement.
Okay, so that's completely open for discussion?
Yes, it is.
And negotiation, and if they want it bad enough, then they know what they have to do?
That's right.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, getting back to the discussion at hand here, the water and sewer rate structure, the new one, here we are again, we've got another budget year where nothing has been satisfied with respect to all of the debates and discussions and public meetings we've had with respect to sewer and water rates in the past, and yet, here we are, we're already a month behind and have to move ahead with the region charging us. What, I know the recommendation with respect to this is to refer to the, and they're not here tonight to speak to this, but to refer this to the stakeholders and the public to have input, so what are we doing with this? Are we just, are we going to find ourselves next year at the same time having rushed to judgment with respect to this, or this has become a little bit of a joke with respect to the discussion on sewer and water rates and equity and fairness, and I'm a little embarrassed that another year has gone by, and we're still no further ahead? And we just got this report on Friday, and to go through this and try to assess it to come to some logical conclusions is very difficult unless you have the staff standing there and giving you some guidance. Where are we going with this, and what are we doing?
Mr. Burden?
Through Your Worship, we did not anticipate to discuss the matter tonight, and perhaps our city clerk can speak to this.
Yeah, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, through the chair.
I know we're not going to discuss it tonight, because I'm not even in a, and we don't have the stakeholders here, so I don't have any problem with that, but I mean, when do we anticipate that this is, are we talking about next year?
No, he's talking about that sometime down the road, Mr. Clerk.
Sometime down the road, I mean, two things, number one, we fully appreciate that no one was going to be able to digest a 12-page report between Friday and Monday, number two, we are often criticized as staff, we're not getting the information out into the public domain for ample time for the public to look at it, review it, and give us feedback, so our point was to get the report on the agenda, so it becomes a talking point for further discussion, there'll be public sessions related to the report, and then it'll be brought back forward. A third thing, which I think is more important, is I fully appreciate the fact that this water rate review structure is dragged on and on and on, but had we made a decision last year, you know, we may have had egg on our face in relation to the region's decisions on what they're charging us going to a total fixed rate system.
Well, at least the region made a decision. Anyway, I appreciate the comments, but I would really like to have some assurance that if we're cutting out the Drummond Road construction, I'd like to know what kind of impact that's going to have, and where you feel your priorities are with respect to the impact it will have on other projects.
Thank you. I have Counselor Wing and Counselor Anoney.
Thanks. I don't think we should be trying to achieve that zero percent increase. I know I'm not comfortable with risking our revenue security, I'm not willing to forego maintenance, and I don't want to forego capital projects with the possible interception of Drummond Road. Hearing that the staff are comfortable with it makes me a bit more comfortable, I'm still not totally sure. I would note that on page four of that report, under monthly service charges, we're looking at, despite the fact that we have this coming down with the pipe from the region, and we have to get this stabilization reserve fund going and that sort of thing, despite all this, we're still looking at the second lowest increase in the past five years. I think that's pretty darn good considering all the factors at work. And just to pick up on something Counselor Peter Angelo said earlier, when it comes to the city rates, I am against increasing the fixed to the city rates, I am against increasing the fixed rate for two reasons. As Counselor Peter Angelo pointed out, that's environmentally irresponsible. That does not encourage people to conserve. And also, it gives the consumer less control over their costs, and that is particularly important to seniors and other people on fixed incomes. The one thing I noticed when I did the number crunching with the region's, regions' report is that there is a disproportionate allocation of fixed costs to Niagara Falls. We are going to be paying 25% of the fixed costs with only 19% of the population. And I looked at a couple other municipalities. Welland has 61% of our population, but they're going to be paying only about 48% of what we're going to be paying in terms of the, the water requisition fixed costs. St. Catherine's, we have 62% of their population, but we're going to be paying 86% of what they pay towards those regional fixed costs. And I know why. It's because of our, our tourist visitation. That drives the costs up. And, you know, whether this is fair or not, I guess depends on whether you live in Niagara Falls or somewhere else in the region. And the people who say, well, you know, look at our insurance rates, they're higher here, are going to be saying, look at this, I'm paying too much in the way of fixed costs because, because of our tourism industry. Yet on the other hand, the rest of the region looks at us with envy and would think this is more than fair. The one thing that I'd really like to note is that the fixed costs are based on historical trends. So if we all start now, all sectors of our community, to reduce our collective water consumption, when that next cycle comes around and we've managed to conserve, all of us, we can lower the consumption on which the next set of fixed rates are going to be based on. So that is the one way we can get this under control. There's nothing we can do with what the region's sending down to us, but by our own behavior, collectively, as a municipality, we can lower those rates in the future.
Counselor Anoni?
She covered mine, too.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Through your worship, I'm just wondering if I can get a question of what happens if we leave $1 million in capital contributions in there? What happens if there's $500,000 in capital contributions in there? How in essence does that affect the rate?
Perhaps Mr. Burden can answer that question. Mr. Burden?
Just in looking at that chart, if we were to replace capital contributions, lowering it to $1 million, the impact to the residential sector is an increase of approximately 1% to 3%. And in our non-residential, or the large meter users, that's about 6% to 8%. What does that mean in dollars? Well, for a homeowner, that would mean an increase of, anywhere from about $6 for the year up to about $32 for the year. And once again, the large meters, you have to look at what their volumes are, but in round numbers, it's about 6% to 8% for the large meter users.
Can I answer the question, Counselor?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Burden? Thank you very much, Mr. Burden. There may be others yet, we'll see if we can try to answer those. I do have some advice by the clerk that we do have a request by Mr. Ed Belowski to address counsel this evening, the pleasure of counsel. A move by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher.
Sorry, what was the motion?
The motion was to allow Mr. Belowski to present to counsel.
Oh, Mr. Belowski, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes?
Is that to this issue? I thought that was to the rate restructuring. Is that, it's not to our utility budget.
Well, I'm not sure. We'll find that out in a second, but, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Belowski provided me with a disc and a handout. I can pass it around, and maybe that'll help you make your determination. I think it's related to the other report, but he disagrees with me.
Okay, Counselor Anoni?
Well, I would assume that he, I, I thought his argument up to this point, or his position up to this point, was on the water rate restructuring and not on our utility budget. So I'd like to take a look at what he has, but I would say that goes more to the next, to the next report.
Possibly maybe the case. Let's just see.
These are reductions. Canister project. Thank you.
Stabilization. You want to do something with the, with the increase rate? I tried to move that. Okay, wait a second. We tend to be kind of, those are probably.
Right. So if we reduce, these are senior projects that we need to.
Yes, we have the circulation of the information that Mr. Belowski supplied. We have a motion on the floor. Any further comments? Counselor Anoni?
Mr. Mayor, I think it would go more, I, I think we're discussing our, our utility budget, not the water rate restructuring, which I think this votes more towards. I think that's been his position all along. So I'm going to vote against the motion and let him speak to the next one.
Okay. Members of council, if you'd like to call the, the vote. Unless there's any other comments, or any other comments from members of council. So we have a motion on the floor to allow Mr. Belowski to speak. The question is whether they affect the, the charges or the, the budget we have before us? Yes, Mr. Clerk?
I mean, I think the question you should be asking yourself is, will this presentation affect your decision on the water, on the municipal, municipal utility budget?
Yes, Counselor Wing?
I know it won't affect my decision, and Counselor Anoni pointed out that she had actually moved report CPS 200902 earlier and was asked to defer until Mr. Burden had spoken. Well, Mr. Burden has been up and spoken, has answered a lot of questions. I think it's time for us to move on with passing the municipal utility budget. In fact, I'll second that motion now.
We have a motion on the floor, ready.
Oh, okay. Oh.
Okay. Any other comments to the motion? Okay, having seen all those in favor, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, opposed, 3. Fine, Mr. Belowski, if you'd just like to come forward, please, please adhere, please adhere to the time, the timing allowed of 10 minutes. And as you know, we're going to be having further discussion with regard to the rate structure. I think you've been able to supply us with some very good valuable information. We appreciate that, and I hope that this will come forward as well at that time, too. Can you just try to address it, how it affects the, on the budget here before us this evening?
This is strictly to do with that particular report, Your Worship. The report, with respect to interpretation of the data that is in that budget report, okay? It will only address three subject matters. One, the monthly service charge, and then the two charts that were presented.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Charts in a, in a manner that will show what is regarded as impact, but really what that data that was presented really means. And I think it'd be very informative for the council members and Your Worship.
Mr. Belowski, could you just please speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. The first item is to do with the monthly service charge. The real problem is, when we talk fixed costs, what are we talking about? We say, regions put fixed costs, but what about the fixed costs that were introduced in 2001? The service charge before that, in 2000, was $1.25 per quarter. Then we brought this, we brought into this service charge. What has this done to the structure? It means, if you take a look at it, that now the whole costs have shifted to the homeowner. So we have about 80% of the costs picked up by the homeowner. That, when you take that into dollars and go back to 2008, that means the homeowner's paid approximately, we can't get firmed out of it because we can't get the numbers out of staff, but that translates to something like $13.5 million paid by homeowners and $3.5 million paid by the rest of the sector. Now, if we just take a look at the, so what we have really is a flat-rate service charge by meter size, and we got rid of the flat rate for the volumetric charge. A volumetric charge you can't control, because that's from the region's a pass-through cost, and staff just rightly increased the volume that they think the losses are going to be, and that's how we come to the rate. So a 1.7214 charge is a charge that they've calculated. I don't disagree with that. Volumetric is, it's a two-part rate structure, the first part being that part, you have no control over, so we have to live with that. Now, if we can go to the first chart, on the top part, you have what staff has presented in their report. And that is one interpretation of what that is, but that you can't really get any information out of that. And it's, it lists the residential, but that's not residential. It's residential and commercial, and there are one hell of a lot of commercial customers, hundreds, that are below the 5 cubic meter per month or 60 cubic meters per year. So take a look at it from another standpoint, and if you look at it, and you'll see now the new rate structure in 2009, for a 5-meter customer, residential or commercial, will translate to $10.62 or $0.67 per cubic meter. Now go down that list, and it doesn't end like staff had 25 cubic meters. It goes on further, and you'll see what the impact is. It goes from that $10 to, take a look at what it says for 20 cubic meters per year, and compare it to the bottom line, which, which says that for the residential, because all those can be, all the volumes that you see there are all simply a 5/8 by 3/4 inch meter. That's a residential meter, and it's small. Now, if you happen to be trapped, and you're a commercial person trapped with a 2-inch meter, when you could be using a half, a 3/4 inch meter, he's paying maybe $4,000 or $5,000 more a year. Okay, now, so we have that interpretation, so you go, so you can see what scales down. Now, that is the problem caused by the fixed rate. Nothing to do with the volumetric charge we're talking about. Now, so we, so what we do have there is the commercial plus the residential that fall into that sector, and you'll see that I go down to 1,500 cubic meters, which is the high-end user in the residential section. There aren't too many of these people, but they fall into that category, so you can see they're paying the very low, low rate, because that's what the cost's all about, the cost per cubic meter. You don't turn around and talk about, oh, well, you know, this is what we're paying, and it's a fixed cost, and therefore it goes by flow rate. That's a lot of nonsense, and it shouldn't be accepted by this council. They're the real numbers. Now, if you go to the commercial sector, what you have, if you take a look at it, the first four categories that you see up there, 1-inch, when in 2001, that 1-inch was called residential. Now we put it into commercial, but that's not the point. The point is that you've got the, the rate there at 100 cubic meters. The next one's 200. The first four, they all can be, turn around and handled by 8, 1-inch or less meter. In fact, they can all be handled probably by 3/4 inch meter or 5/8 by 3/4. Then you get down, and you'll see what I've done is I've put what they've put in, which are low volumes going up to 2,200. Nobody in their right mind would put, put a 20, that has a 2,200 a month demand for water ever put in a 4-inch meter. We're talking 4-inch meters are capable of producing up to 60,000 cubic meters, in fact, per, per year. We have a, that's in the 2007 report, where a 50, a 4-inch meter supplied 151,000 cubic meters per year. But if you look further in there, you'll find that in this, once the high-end months, so when the demand is high, they can carry up to 20,000, 20,000 cubic meters a month. That translates into 200,000-plus cubic meters. So on, or I haven't broken down into two sections to see what happens, that you've got the realistic type of scenario where you would turn around and say, this is the type of meter I would require. But if you go further, go to the last meter, which is 6-inch, I didn't even bother with the 8 and 10, because you've got 2 meters up that side. But if you take a look at that, you'll see there's a customer that uses in the 6-inch. Now, I have to go only with 2007 data, that used less than 6,000 cubic meters with a 6-inch meter. And the cost is, I believe, $4.80 a cubic meter. Go to the high-end customer, and that had 884,720 cubic meters to that particular year. That translates into a $1.46 or whatever.
$75.
But it's, it's below $2, $2 a cubic meter. So what, what have you got? You've got a scenario that shows that the problem is not with that. The problem is the allocation. Everybody understands that you have to pay the, the city costs. Nobody will argue with that. But if you're paying city costs by taking out, taking it out on the homeowners and having them subsidize, in essence, the high-end users, that's where you have your problem, and that's why you have the high, high rates. This whole structure, as I said, using this meter, and I mentioned this way back when first we got into this, that that fixed charge system is flawed. What the fixed, as you raise the fixed cost of the residential rate, it then shifts the cost burden over to the low user, and, and that's the scenario that you've gotten into. Now, if you just...
Mr. Belowski, I have about 2 minutes left. 2 minutes left.
Okay, now, so you can just take a look at our, I've translated this into cost per cubic meter, and then you have the other two sheets, which just are, for information's sake, it says this. I don't have a slide for that, because I just, as I said, I just want to keep this to a minimum. It says that in the year 2007, the casino's contribution in 2007 was 2.3, 2.3 cents a cubic meter. That's its contribution to the service charge. In 2, in the following year, 2008, where the casino used 954,185 cubic meters, the contribution was 2.2 cents. Now, that's information, staff can take a look at this, and then the only other item that I have on the last page, and it won't show up in the slot, is the fact that St. Catherine's, which we brought up, 2009, a 240 cubic meter customer will pay $740.88. With this proposed rate structure for Niagara Falls, that same residential homeowner will pay $950.43. Now, if council looks through these numbers, which is my interpretation of the data taken from that report, that's all it is. It's just, I took it from the report, the council was presenting to you people for the rate structure. Then I think it'd be very informative and show that what we have is a cost system. Of course, we're just looking at it for a new rate structure, but as Counselor Thompson has pointed out, nowhere in the business world, nowhere, would anybody say, let's turn around and take a look at the rate structure, and then three years later say, oh, well, we have to pass this off because we used that same excuse last year. It has to be paid. Agreed. But nowhere in the business world would you take three years and still not have a decision. And so I can only conclude by saying that it appears to me to be an excellent case study for a business course, and that what we have here is grossness management at the highest management level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay?
Our staff feels without question.
Yes. There'll be a discussion, Counselor, that we'll have on the rate structure. I'm sure we can address that at the time, unless counsel wishes to have staff make a comment. Mr. Belowski's opinion, but...
Yeah, I, I can't pass that up, Your Worship, and it's unfortunate, it has taken time here. I think what the issue becomes is that we, we agree to disagree with Mr. Belowski in where he wants to go. What he's presented tonight, he's presented before, and that really relates to rate structure. I understand where he's coming from. It, it's a math issue, and I could simplify for some people to understand. If counsel wants me to go there, I will. However, I do take exception to those comments. This has been very much a public process. Council's made it a public process. We've allowed Mr. Belowski his, his opportunity to speak, but council also has taken the concerns of business. We were simply to follow Mr. Belowski's train of thought where we went all volumetric. You would see a huge impact upon the businesses in this community who are very concerned, and council has taken that to light, and that's why every time we come to this council, council's asked us to deal with the stakeholders out there. As we talked about before, stakeholders have more concerns. They want more dialogue with us. They want to know, understand better what the impacts are. with us. They want to know, understand better what the impacts are. And that's why you have that 12- to 13-page document, and what are the potential impacts there. And we need to go back out to the stakeholders there. It's not just the residential community. It's also our business community here. And council's been very cognizant of that, and they've wanted staff to do that. So I do take great exception to those remarks about grossness management. We are following council's lead to look at all the various options, and to make sure that we don't impact negatively on various sectors here in the community.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment. We have engaged the public, and we've had the consultants reissue, actually reconsider, and report to this council. So we have taken time. We have dealt with the matter. We will have future meetings as well, and there'll be time for presentation by those interested parties and stakeholders. I know considerable expense has been spent by those people asking for input, and they've gone to their own consultants with respect to their water charges, the larger users in particular. So I know we'll have an opportunity. So there will be an opportunity in future to deal with regard to the rates themselves. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go back to my original motion, and I'm going to move that we move the municipal utility budget absent, included with the removal of the Drummond Road reconstruction project, because I anticipate Counselor Peter Angelo is going to make that motion under infrastructure build. So I'd like staff to remove that 800,000, and tell me, can you tell me the percentage that we'll be moving at this point?
Here, $800,000?
Take the 800,000 out.
Eight hundred on 7.3 million. Is that correct, Mr. Burden? Or total, be total combined, right?
I think you're...
Just understand...
What the council is talking about is taking $800,000 out of capital contributions...
Yes.
Which reduce, which will reduce the total city reduction.
What that represents?
Somewhere in the range of 1.757.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Burden, can you confirm what that figure represents, if you understand the question?
Your worship, I'd like to take time to calculate that, because what I understand the question here is 800,000 is the only reduction.
Correct.
We're not contemplating the new stabilization reserve, taking that out.
No.
You're not contemplating contract that services, taking that out.
No.
It's just 800,000.
Correct.
And...
Actually, and Mr. Mayor, by leaving, by not touching, that's beautiful, by not touching anything, we were looking at a 6.9 increase. And as Counselor Wing pointed out, it's the second lowest we've had since '05. But if we reduce that $800,000 off of there, I'm asking, when you reduce the $800,000, rather than 6.9, we're looking at, I would say, what is it, 5.8?
Well, by my calculations, you may be correct. The figure that we received, if I'm correct, is $335,000 equals 1% combined on the...
I thought it was 4.
On both, fixed water and sewer. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct. But remember, the 120 would be actual reduction in costs, and the 215, the other part of the 335, is actually a use of reserves, a transfer in of reserves to reduce the volumetric charge.
My motion stands.
Okay.
Just the reduction of the $800,000 from the Drummond Road project.
Okay. We have a motion. Of course, there's a second to the motion. Counselor Peter Angelo, do you want to speak to that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those in favor? Six? Seven? Opposed? One. Thank you. The motion's carried. Thank you very much. Perhaps, Mr. Burden, you can get back to us with that information. You did the calculation. Move on to the capital budget now as well, please. This is, Mr. Dulewic, are you going to speak to this matter?
Your worship, as a result of the discussion of the general purposes budget being passed, and only 800,000 being reduced from the utility budget, all projects, as in the binder, stay except for the Drummond Road project. So all the other projects are as-is. I understand that TAB 8 is unfunded, so everything else would stay as-is in the capital budget, save except for the Drummond Road project, which is under sheet, page 39, under TAB 3.
Thank you. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that very little change, I'm prepared to move the capital budget.
We have a mover for the capital budget. Is there a second to the motion, Counselor Peter Angelo? Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Move on to the next item on the agenda, and it's the CAO's report with respect to the water and sewer rate structure, CPS 2009-03. The clerk's going to speak to this matter.
I think we already covered it during the last conversation, but just as stated, the report's not for a decision tonight. It's just to put it out in the public domain. There will be future information sessions on the contents of the report, and it'll come back to council in the future.
So just to advise everyone watching, we will have further meetings, and please stay posted to the newspaper. There'll be ads circulated. We're asking for input from the stakeholders, so we'll have an opportunity to have a full presentation, probably a full meeting dedicated to that. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk? Okay. We'll see what the response is. So we'll look forward to that at a future date. Mr. Bilowski, I hope you keep that in mind as well. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. We're going to deal with, yes, Mr. Clerk?
Still get the recommendation approved?
Yes. We moved the recommendation, moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any comments or discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. I just have a couple of comments to make this evening. Members of council like to begin by offering our condolences to Mr. John Morocco, who's our operations superintendent at the City Service Center, on the passing of his brother, Tony. We're all very saddened to hear this news, and we offer our heartfelt condolences to John and his wife, Joyce, former municipal counselor, and also to Mrs. Iona Morocco and her family as they mourn the loss of Anthony Morocco. I'd like to bring to the attention of members of council and residents to the annual Day of Mourning event, which will take place tomorrow outside City Hall, or at 4:30 PM at Centennial Square. I invite all residents to attend and show their support for this important memorial and awareness event that this pays tribute to the workers killed on the job. There'll be a full presentation at 4:15 outside of the City Hall doors. concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. We have item F2009-23, the Grassy Brook Garner Road Compensation Financing. I believe Mr. Harrison's going to be speaking to this. Unless there's anything you want to pull, it's fair to say. Requested by council, is there anything, any items you wish to pull? If not, do you want to move the consent agenda?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. Move on to the infrastructure funding matters. We have with us a memo and chart from staff on the possible projects to be forwarded for the Infrastructure Stimulus Fund and the Second Intake of the Building Canada Fund. You're going to have the clerk address this issue. There's two changes.
Yeah, two changes. You received the chart on Friday, council members, but there was a couple of typographical errors. So the handout tonight is the chart that you should be referring to, and the changes were only related to the dollar figures associated with the Patrick Cummings Sports Complex and the Transit Operations Facility. Obviously, the memo that staff provided sort of sets out why we're here tonight to deal with this item. Obviously, there's been a program that's been introduced by the federal and provincial governments to, for infrastructure spending to stimulate the economy. The turnaround time for council and staff to put forward the projects is very accelerated. As you know, we just found out about the program in the last week or so, and the deadline is for May the first. Therefore, timing worked out fine because of our special council meeting tonight. So we're asking that council put forward four projects. Our list is by no means exhaustive. However, we feel that these are the projects that have the best opportunity of being considered under the funding criteria. And I know there's obviously some people in the gallery that are interested in specific projects. It's obviously up to council whether they want to entertain any discussion from those groups tonight. I think everybody's familiar with the various projects that are being put forward.
Counselor Iannone?
Thank you. So do I understand correctly, each group's going to make a presentation, or can we start via motion now? How are you doing this?
Well, that's the question. Mr. Clerk, has anybody requested to speak?
No one specifically requested to speak to the items tonight.
That's fine.
Counselor Iannone?
Thank you. Then I'd like to start, and I think probably better to go via motion. We've sat, and we've discussed, well, I've gone through all these projects, and I'll be happy to support Counselor Peter Angelo's Drummond Road when he brings it, because he convinced me. So I'd like to talk about the Boys and Girls Club. I know Counselor Cario stood up when Mr. Dulewic spoke about it at the last meeting, asking if we could use this as one of our projects. And we weren't sure about the time or the date. I understand that you've had a meeting with the Boys and Girls Club and Counselor Cario, and I think that this project's been on the books forever and today. We have unanimously supported up to $5 million matching funds. And if I understand this correctly, by putting this forward as one of our projects, it will save the city $2 million. Is that right?
Three.
Three?
Your worship, just to provide some clarification, we did meet with Representative of the Boys and Girls Club with Counselor Cario. They've indicated the project now is a $12 million project, now that they have better drawings available. So with the funding, they're looking at a third from the federal government, a four, four from the province, then four between the city and the Boys and Girls Club. So we're looking at...
It would drop us three.
Pardon?
It would drop us three.
It would drop us $2 million, because we committed $5 million. So now we're reducing our commitment to $2 million.
And I like those numbers, Mr. Mayor, and it gets a project that we've been behind since the day they came to council. It seems like forever ago, and I would love to still be on council when that project gets up and the kids are in that building. So the first project I would put forward will be the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion, Counselor Cario? Seconded? Okay. Any discussion?
I'd like it recorded.
Any discussion? Counselor Yedda?
Your worship, I'm just wondering how we're going to go about this. Are we going to piecemeal them one at a time? Are we going to group them together? Why don't we have some discussion instead of motioning them one at a time for our pet projects? I support the Boys and Girls Club, too, Your worship. However, there's other things I also support, and I'd like to give them equal opportunity.
That's a fair question. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you. And there is a motion made and seconded on the floor, and he can vote against it. I just thought, rather than going in circles, I don't, I was more looking at projects that we have already approved, and in monies where we could save the municipality dollars. And to me, $3 million on a project that we have gone around the bend with 100 times is certainly something that we could look at. I remember when Counselor Campbell used to stand here, he always thought it was very productive to do it via motion, and I find it gets it done faster. And if he wants to piecemeal projects, he can. I mean, we've already pulled Drummond Road and know that we're going to look at a motion for that. So my motion stands, and I call it recorded.
It's Counselor Peter Angelo. I'm sorry, Counselor Yedda.
Yeah, Your worship. And I don't have a problem with this, but I do have a problem with the process. I don't think this is the right process to deal with it. I fully, as we've discussed here, fully intend to support the Boys and Girls Club. So it's not a matter of whether it's going or not going to. It already had unanimous support around here. So I don't think that's really the issue. The issue is all the other groups that would like some fair attention. I think that's all a matter of what it is, Your worship. And I don't have a problem supporting that motion, but I would request after that, Your worship, that we could, rather than each of us getting up, whoever gets up first, to put their most, so it makes you look like you're against something if you weren't in favor of discussing it. I'd rather it be dealt with in that manner, Your worship.
I see your point, Counselor. I understand that. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I would agree entirely. While I don't have a problem with the Boys and Girls Club going forward, I think it's a good community project. There is only a couple of things that I'd like to point out. I know there is no limit to the amount that you can request for funding, and at the committee level, that was previous to council. I know you made some comments. You're very comfortable in the fact that you will be able to get the higher political representatives that, I guess, are representing us in Niagara Falls to sort of agree to our projects, even though they might not be the notional allocation that Mr. Dulewic has told us about. I was comfortable hearing that, Your worship. Comfortable supporting the motion, but I would agree. I mean, there's a lot of groups here that are looking for funding. We should be hearing from all and doing it all at once.
And I understand that, you know, Counselor, and I guess what I was saying earlier was that we do need the concurrence of our federal member of parliament and our provincial member of provincial parliament. It would be nice to have them on board. And I think, obviously, the Boys and Girls Club and others have made representation to them as well, but it would be nice to have it. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah. And, you know, the only other point, Your worship, is that, I mean, I know that the stimulus funding is going to be, or one of the highest priorities is going to be given to those projects that can spend half of the money by May 2010, and then the other half by May 2011. So I hope to the Boys and Girls Club, Your worship, that they are ready to go, because I talked to one of the people from the Infrastructure Stimulus Fund today, one of the managers there, who said that those will be the projects that get preference.
And I believe that I had heard there's some questions that you may want to ask of some of the groups in respect to timing. It's being a factor, and I think we should be able to hear that information. Yes. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion's on the floor. I thought we generally debate motions. So, I mean, it's up for total discussion. I just thought it would move us a whole lot quicker doing this.
I appreciate that. I just think we should have the opportunity for all the council to have input, so.
Well, that's what this is.
Yeah, sure. And the point is, Mr. Clerk, do you want to make a comment?
Well, I don't think there's any way or correct way of doing this. I mean, we've talked about this internally as staff. I mean, you've got to come up with four choices tonight. That's a difficult task. I think Counselor Iannone makes a good point in that you should put motions on the floor. That doesn't mean you're taking a position. It just means you're going to engage in debate on whatever the motion may be. Having said that, I also appreciate the other viewpoint is, is it going to be the people who, the first four people that get in there, the project that they're interested in? So you know there's only four projects. The other thing I would say, Counselor Iannone made a comment about hoping to see the project at the end. I would caution you that this funding program is contingent on the project being completed by March 2011. So you've got to bear that in mind. So, yeah.
Okay. So would the council preference be to hear from the Boys and Girls Club with regard to, you may have questions for them? Is that the pleasure of council? I'm seeing yes. Counselor Wing?
I would like to know that they can meet the time...
Yeah, and I understand that. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what I need to hear. I just wanted to note that, I mean, you know, there's, I think there's 28 projects here on this menu, and we have to narrow it down to four. You know, I think if we all had our way, we'd probably have put out 28 of them for it. But, you know, when I looked at this, I looked at three criteria. One of them is projects that are going to benefit the whole community. And, you know, to me, things like the sewer separation, big sewer separation projects, and they're going to, because if you're not sending rainwater to the sewage treatment plant, then that's a little bit less that all of us have to pay for sewage treatment. So that benefits the whole community. Boys and Girls Club, I think, undeniably benefits the whole community. They serve everybody from, you know, the northwest corner right down to Chippewa. And, you know, so I think there's no question about that. Another criteria for me are projects we have to do anyhow. And so anything that has to do with city infrastructure, again, this, you know, sewer separation projects, of course, that's something we have to do anyhow. We have no choice. Boys and Girls Club is stretching it a bit, but we made the commitment, and that's certainly something we don't want to see disappear from this community. So it looks to me like this is something we have to support no matter what, even though it's not officially city infrastructure. And the other criteria I looked at, the third one, was how much it's going to save the city. You know, what is the benefit overall? And, you know, the biggies again are those sewer separation projects, 4 million, 2.5 million. But 3 million is right there in that same ballpark. So I just need to know that, yes, they can meet the timelines that are so important in this.
I'd like you to allow them to speak.
Yes, okay. We're motion to allow them to speak, seconded by Counselor Wing. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Now, we, members of council, we do have some items that will not have any impact on the budget. As you know, there are two items there. You might talk about the biggest bang for the dollar, but obviously, there's questions you'll have to ask each presenter, so we'll see what happens. So is there a member of the Boys and Girls Club that'd like to make a presentation? Please come forward. And just for the benefit of the record, for those watching at home, would you just identify yourself? And if you could stick to the 10-minute limit, we'd appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Joanne Turner, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club, and I'm joined tonight with several members of our board and our staff. Thank you, Your worship, and members of city council. I will be extremely brief, and hopefully, I'll be able to, just through my presentation, be able to answer some of those outstanding questions.
Perhaps, Mrs. Head, we know the benefit of the project.
Exactly.
What we don't know is the changes that have taken place. If you could highlight those changes, that would certainly expedite.
You're absolutely right, Your worship. The need and urgency for this project is very well-known. I have no intention of going into a lot of that detail. It was best said by the feasibility study that the city commissioned in 2007, who said the existing building was not built to today's standards and is becoming more antiquated each passing year. There is little question that something must be done in the short term to address the state of the Boys and Girls Club infrastructure, and that came from, that simply statement from the commission report that we both worked on together with the city. I think that says it all. The other piece that was mentioned was the support for this project by the leadership in this community is also very well-known, not only from this council, which April had passed a resolution identifying it as a priority project, but also from our MP and our MPP and the lead donors and contributors in a capital campaign, which is now at 1.4 million in cash donations and pledges. After months of working with the MP and MPP's office to identify the potential federal and provincial contributions, and we all knew this project was not going to take place without those contributions, which is part of the ISF, we're nothing less than elated to see the excellent fit between the ISF grant and the new... to see the excellent fit between the ISF grant and the new Boys and Girls Club project. Specifically, the timing of this grant would allow for groundbreaking the ceremony in September and construction to follow in October, and yes, we will spend more than half, more than half, coming into the halfway mark to 2010. We've confirmed with both Panachi Architects and Ellis Dawn, who has been doing volunteer work from us from day one, that this is easily achievable and they're prepared to, by May 1st, give that notice and write it into city council. The funding formula, and the best part, is that that funding formula would allow the city and the club to complete the project with significantly decreased investment, as Counsel Ryanone said, and also the debenture cost, which is a huge saving as well. These are god sends in these troubled times. We're trusting council will move the proposal forward, as Monty Brown said. There's little question that something must be done, and we ask that you embrace this opportunity, finally get the shovel in the ground, this much-needed, supported, urgent project. It's a tremendous opportunity for everyone and the children and youth of the city would thank you so much for serious consideration.
So just, Mrs. Head, perhaps, yes, you might want to answer the question with regard to the revised construction cost. Do you feel those figures are accurate now? You've changed the numbers?
We submitted to the federal government last year with a budget of 11.5 and in terms of, we're working off of 5% increase per year.
11.5 million?
So we feel it's the right number, yeah. 11.5 was last year and April we submitted and so an increase, we're looking at the right number is 12.
12 million this year. Okay, are there any questions of Mrs. Head? Yes, Counsel DiDaddi.
Yeah, thank you, worship. So are we very comfortable that the timelines of this project are gonna be met, because there's a lot of money riding on it for the city? So we just need some reassurance, because we want to support it, provided that you're 100% confident.
That's why we spoke to the architect and also Ellis Dawn this week. They're looking at a construction period of about 14 months. It is true that we have a little bit of development work to do and we're looking at the drawings preliminary being proved in July by the board, which would allow us to RFP. So we're incredibly excited, we will get done on time. The, likely even December, but with discussions with staff, we had agreed that we would put our proposed timeline at March 2011, barring any holdups.
And I just wanted to advise, in my discussions with the federal minister, he just cautioned that any projects we undertake have to be completed. I know that there's been a lot of suggestion that if the government's forced into it, they might extend, but they're reminding us that they're doing this for the sake of creating incentive for jobs to be created and to stimulate those jobs. Are you certain that the job can be done and completed by that time? Because we'll miss out on funding if you don't have it fully advanced.
We are absolutely certain and we can also have that attested by Ellis Dawn and also the architect.
And if you don't meet that, do you have a plan B in terms of what you'll do for the balance of the funding?
We're expecting to finish in December. The whole bulk of the construction is upfront. We're not expecting to go past March 11. If it was, it would be a couple of weeks and I don't think there'd be any cost by that time, most everything would be paid.
Okay, thank you. Counsel DiDaddi.
Last question is the money side. How's it looking with the fundraising? Obviously, I know a little bit, times are a little challenging, but now that the number's been maybe reduced, does it, are we hopeful that we'll achieve that in time as well?
The 1.4 is pledges and donations and we're launching the public part of our capital campaign on May 21st through a gala launch at Crown Plaza Hotel, just sponsored by the DeSenzio family. We are anticipating at that to make $40,000 to $50,000. And after that, we roll out the capital campaign with the general and major gifts and yes, we're, according to the campaign consultant, we should be done by December as well.
Okay. Any further questions of Mrs. Head? Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Head.
Thank you.
Members of council, we have, we've answered all those questions you've asked. Pleasure, council, we have a motion before us. Are you ready for the vote? Counsel Thompson?
No.
Okay, this is recorded, recorded vote. Clerk.
Obviously, the motion is put forward, Boys and Girls Club project to the appropriate stimulus program. Counsel DiDaddi, for. Counsel Fisher?
For.
Counsel Ryanone?
For.
Counsel Carrio?
For.
Counsel Maves?
For.
Counsel Peter Angelo?
In favor.
Counsel Thompson?
Yes.
Counsel Wing?
In favor.
Mayor Salsi?
For.
She announced, thank you very much. Okay, yes, Counsel Peter Angelo and Counsel Wing.
Your worship, since we're just putting motions on the floor, I mean, I'd like to take a bit of heart of the infrastructure. I think that we have the Drummond Road reconstruction, which to me, I put together both phases, comes out to a project cost of $6.2 million. I guess my question then would be to staff, can we submit that as one project? It would seem reasonable that we can, because I mean, it will be done in successive years and the project, it itself entails one type of the other.
Mr. Doolovic?
Your worship, it is contiguous, because it's the same road. I mean, we, the staff, we picked the, where the start and phasing, and that was really just because of, we didn't have any more funding to go on with Phase 2, to be quite honest with you. Now with what's happened tonight, we don't have funding for Phase 1, so it's one large project. As I got an update from staff, for Phase 1, we have 80% of the design drawings completed. For Phase 2, the base plans are completed. You might say, well, what's so great about that? Well, that gives the designers a running start, now they know where they can put their infrastructure. As I said earlier, the EA is completed, which gives you a good schematic of what the road is to look like out there. So we're quite a ways along on that project with the respect to, with respect to design and getting, and very confident getting that project out the door, so we can start construction this fall.
Almost, almost immediately, is that correct?
I think when we're gonna package it all together, we may be looking at the fall or something like that, but I mean, yes, definitely we're gonna get that project out this year.
Thank you. Counsel?
Yeah, I guess, your worship, I mean, then for anyone that's generally down there, we all know the condition of Drummond Road, a total project cost of $6.2 million. It achieves us the savings of $4.1 million, almost. So I'd like to put the motion on the floor that we submit the Drummond Road reconstruction as one large project.
By Counsel Peter Angelo, find a second, Counsel Ryanone. Further discussion, Counsel Wing, did you want to make a comment? Okay, any further discussion? I know we had delayed this project once already, so it'd be nice to have that moved forward. Any questions, members of council? Okay, all those in favor? Motion is carried, this is project number two. Counsel DiDaddi? Counsel, I'm sorry, Counsel Wing should be next, I have her.
Just wanted to, I didn't notice this earlier, but there is an email from the Board of Museums on the Lundy's Lane Gateway Walkway. I just wanted to declare a conflict on that, because my spouse is employed at the museum. And as I said earlier, there's a number of projects I'd love to see funded. I mean, I support transportation services, but I think we can get gas tax money from there. The Sylvia Place Market redevelopment, I would have loved to have seen that be put forward under this, because it's a city facility that we own. It was, the current facility dates to 1968, it's failing, it needs to be replaced. It's, I lifted this right out of the Historic Drummondville CIP, it's a key element of the vision for Historic Drummondville. And of course, one thing I've learned recently, since we started talking about, is that the churches, our city churches are really keen on supporting farmers and local food, the local food movement, so you know, it ties into that, benefits the whole community. But I think overall, as far as the two projects we have left to put forward go, the most important ones are the Dussen Avenue, Buchanan Avenue, Slater Avenue, Storm Sewer Separation, additional debenture of $4 million eliminated, and I've watched that when we do the five-year capital budget, get pushed back a couple of times and, you know, I've really wanted to see that go ahead, because while we leave those storm sewers unseparated, we keep sending rainwater to the sewage treatment plant and we gotta pay for treating rainwater. And the other one that has, I've been really dismayed about when every time that it's got sent back, is the Ryle Street Sewer Separation. And there, we can eliminate an additional debenture of $2.5 million. And not only does it allow us to separate all the storm sewers in the area, but it's going to extend their life and it's going to extend the life of the pumping station. And I have taken this right from our Capitol Works binder, so this one is key as well and I've watched both these two projects get pushed down, you know, to future years and every time we have, I thought, oh, we shouldn't be doing this. So right now, I will move those as the final two projects to be put forward. Dussen Avenue, Buchanan, Slater and Ryle.
I prefer that you separate them, please.
Okay, Ryle Street Sewer Separation.
We have a motion on the floor to move the Ryle Street Sewer Separation. Is there a second to the motion?
No.
No second to the motion? Yes, sir? Counsel Carrio?
I'd like a comment from the staff. If we're talking about infrastructure, I'd like to get some input from staff. I think that they're much more suited to give us comment on what they would rather see us proceed with or what. If we're gonna do an infrastructure project, you should be telling us which one you want us to look at, which one's most important, which one saves us the most money. I'd like to hear some input from staff on infrastructure.
Mr. Holman? Do you wish to offer a comment?
Mr. Mayor, each of these projects should have been done long ago and so there's no real priority to them. They each have advantages. Now that we have an outlet for the Dussen, Buchanan, Slater area, we can eliminate basement flooding and sewage problems that we have in that area. Ryle Street, again, is one that we just haven't been able to make it the most important. And, you know, these are the types of programs that help you move these projects up in the list and a lot of the work, the engineering work, is done on these and as close to being shovel-ready as we can make them. So I really can't tell you that one's better than the other, quite frankly, they're all important. And if we don't do them this year, they'll be on the list again next year.
I'll second Ryan.
We have a second for Ryle by Counsel Ryanone, just speaking to the motion, Counsel DiDaddi.
Your worship, you know, I, if this motion doesn't pass, we've got some people here in the group that are, that have come to speak to some of the issues and I'd like to hear from them, quite frankly, before making our final two decisions.
Appreciate that, that's a point. And to move two at the same time doesn't make sense, we've got people here wanting to speak, so I think that's another issue, we should be listening to those people as well. Okay, members of council, we have, we have a motion on the floor. Any other comments? Move the Ryle Street, the Ryle Street Sewer Separation. Counsel Wing?
I just wanted to reiterate, when I looked through these, I looked for three things, things that will benefit the whole community. If we're not paying to send rainwater through the sewage treatment plant, it benefits all of us, no matter where we live in the city. If, projects we have to do anyhow, well, we just heard from Mr. Holman, these are projects we have to do anyhow, we know that. And the amount of money to be saved, you know, these two projects, Ryle and Dussen, we're talking about $6.5 million. Ryle is $2.5, Dussen is $4 million. That's a lot of money and that's not even including what we're gonna save on our sewer bill and it's not including extending the life of the sanitary sewers in that northern part or the pumping station. So there's additional savings that haven't even been factored into this.
I have a question for staff, members of council, just so you may be having that answer. We show on our list, there's no impact on city funding for two projects, one being the Northwest Sanitary Service Area and the other one being the downtown streetscaping. I'd like staff just to explain that, what that impact might be and why there is no impact if we, you know, whether we include them or not include them, so who can address that?
Your worship, with the Northwest Sanitary Sewer, some members of council may recall, that project was initiated because of some health concerns that are out there. That project is pretty well tender-ready. We went through an EA that was approved, we do have a certificate of approval for the pumping station. I think we're about a month away of just finalizing the design drawings, there's some shop drawings there, so that's where that project sits. And what the issue is, is that it would be Club Italia that would be paying for that project and looking at, in the future, recovering from whoever may hook up. So this would benefit them, if two-thirds of the funding came from the federal and provincial government, then they would only have to pay one-third of that cost. With respect to downtown, what we're looking at doing is leveraging our $518,000 that council recently approved, so we're gonna take that 518 and try to get matching federal and provincial dollars. I know staff met, they're looking at doing some sidewalk work and soon doing some additional work down there and I would leave it up, I know there was a meeting beforehand that talked about that, but I think they were talking about doing some more infrastructure work down there and what that 1.5 or 1.6 million would entail. But that's what we're looking at doing with those two projects.
All righty. Well, we have a motion on the floor with regard to Ryle. Do you have any other questions with regard to Ryle? Any comments? Okay, vote recorded? Yes, Counsel Carrio?
Before the vote, your worship, I have a comment. I think if we're going to do another infrastructure project, I'd like to see us get the biggest bang for our buck and that wouldn't be Ryle. It would be, I mean, they're all important, but if we're only gonna do one more infrastructure, we're gonna do another community project, I think you'd wanna do Dussen before you did Ryle. It's a $4 million saving to the city, not a $2.5 million saving. My priority is to save the city money, to get this money from the feds and to save the municipality and the taxpayers as much money as we can. So that's where my priority's gonna be in the vote, so I would, unless we're gonna do all infrastructure projects now and not give the other people a chance, then I'd support it. Otherwise, I'd have to support Dussen over Ryle.
Yes, Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, Robert, here, I agree with the process, but we're getting off track here. We had a meeting prior to this with the downtown board and we heard about some of the exciting things and some of the work that has gone on and some of the opportunities that are there. This is the heart of the community, this is a great opportunity with infrastructure dollars to do a lot of work downtown, streetscaping. We have a theater, I think some of the councilors had a tour down there today. I've been down there many times myself to see what is going on and I think there's a real opportunity to not only go along with all of the wonderful work that has gone down, that has gone on downtown, but also to really finalize what is going to be an extremely successful revitalization of the downtown. We're talking about 1.5 with no impact on the municipality and their budget. However, we did hear about the opportunity for the turnaround at Queen and River Road. We heard about the opportunity for the upgrading of a theater, which is already under construction with 300 seats, but could be 550 seats, which would really cement the success for the revitalization of the downtown. And that's where my priority is, that's where I'm gonna vote and support and I'm certainly not going to bypass that for some infrastructure going under the ground at this time. I think it's finally time, we should support the downtown and get it underway the way we should have years ago.
I agree. And, certainly, the question, thank you. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, and I agree with Counsel Thompson. I mean, I will support the downtown as well, but I mean, we do have two more projects to pick, so I mean, my preference would be to see another infrastructure project go forward. I think Counsel Carrio is right in the sense that Dussen Avenue, Buchanan Avenue, Slater Avenue, to me, is the one that gets the most bang for the buck. It saves the city a $4 million debenture in the future and we have had flooding problems there in the past and this will alleviate that. So we need one more infrastructure project.
We're limited to four, but to that point, Counsel Carrio?
Your worship, just strictly from a business and a numbers point of view, if we got the Dussen Street project approved and the Ryle Street project approved, the city would save $6.5 million. We could give the downtown 1.5 million to do their project and still be $4 million, $5 million ahead. That's my point. You know, you still would be ahead if we got those other two projects that we don't have to fund.
Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, and I know that councillor Carrion, because he's not part of the committee, was not at the meeting prior to this, but I think that you really need to hear the presentation from the downtown board, because their ask is not only going to be 1.5 million.
Because that's too small.
It's going to be a lot more than that. It's actually going to be more than the Desen Avenue ask is. So perhaps we can hear from the downtown. There is a motion on the floor, though, for Ryle Street. I don't know if you want to deal with that right now.
That's right. That's for the reason that we should be listening to the people who are here making the presentations.
Exactly. I agree.
Councillor Inoue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read your comments today in regards to the Lundys Lane overpass, and you talked about getting the best bang for their buck, and I'm confused as to where we're going here. Councillor Wing made an initial motion that would save us over $6 million. And if I hear around this table, the point is to save us money and leverage it for the best bang for the buck for all the residents. I would dare say the residents on Ryle and in that subdivision would be screaming at the TV saying, wait a second, we've been in line forever and a day, as would the people on Desen. I'm not sure whether I think beautifying an area that we're already committing to with our CIP and that we committed to last week, kind of, I know it takes me contrary to my campaign promise, so I know I'm not going in that direction. But I remember campaigning and telling people that infrastructure was our most important project. I think we all ran pretty much the same ad verbatim. She stood up and said, we could save 6.5 million. He just reiterated it on two underground infrastructure projects. So I'm not sure whether making pretty is better than improving. So she had a motion, I'm going to support her motion, but she had a motion on the floor to cover the two and save us that amount of money. So if councillor Carrion's point is we're trying to save as much as possible, her original motion covered that. And I'm not quite sure in this time how many people sitting at home are saying to us, I think you need to beautify as opposed to improve, because I don't know how we're going to improve next year. Because this money, hopefully, they'll be stimulus money next year, because it looks like we're only going from bad to worse. But hopefully that we're putting our best bang for the buck, is your comment this morning. And I know it's not pretty when you do it underground, and it's not beautiful, but it's certainly going to service thousands of homes, and maybe not have those people in my committee downstairs in community services saying, you knew my basements were flooding, and you did nothing about it when you had the money.
Okay, councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And again, the speculation is that it's just downtown beautification, and if we, if we sit back.
Can we actually listen to the presentation before we, again, start to try to surmise what it is that they're trying to achieve here, then maybe we can understand it better. Because it isn't just downtown beautification. It has to do with improving a lot of the facilities down here. So why don't we listen to them, your worship?
And no question about that, councillor. We have a tax base to protect, there's no question. There's revenues, future revenues, future development, future growth, more revenue to the city. In fact, it will give us more taxes to spend on infrastructure, there's no question. So that's a revenue generator. Plus, if you want to see a good example of an eroded tax base or destroyed tax base, just look across the river, there's no downtown left. They tore all the buildings down. So that's a classic case. But I do have councillor Carrion, councillor Maves, and councillor Deedadd.
Your worship, not to prolong it, but the other thing we have to think about is, it's all fine and dandy to say what we might like, but we're not going to be the ultimate people who make this decision. We also have to think about what would be popular for the feds and the province. Would it be popular for them to give all their money to underground services? They're coming forward facing an election very soon. They might want to pick, to have the opportunity to pick from a variety of projects that we submit, not all the same. That's why I thought we might be thinking about going with a couple and a couple. Ultimately, the province and the feds are going to decide anyways.
Okay, I have councillor Maves, councillor Deedadd.
I just want to find out where we're going here. Are we just going to do four things? Or can we?
We can only do four.
Okay, all right. We said four, but now we're going to save $10.5 million. And councillor Carrion said that while we're saving money, we could also spend some money because of what we're saving. Can we do this in a separate thing? Spend some more money, use that in our capital budget?
We're talking about submitting under a program.
So we're going to send these people home if we vote these two in? The rest of these people are here for no reason at all?
No, because we're council, you can discuss whatever. Council, there's no problem doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Deedadd?
Yes, your worship. You know, for the fact alone that we have not heard from the people here, I'm not going to support the next motion until I hear from the people here. I don't think it's fair that everyone here will compete for one last spot, like a game show. Absolutely, we support infrastructure. However, Boys and Girls Club was not about infrastructure. That was about the community. And I want to hear both from these other community groups. You know, I've yet to hear one person say, I moved to such and such a city because the sewers were all separated. I've yet to have somebody say that. I think it's important, but it's not the be-all end-all. And we have to balance the underground with the above-ground. And, your worship, I will not vote, because I want to hear from who's here to speak, your worship.
Okay, thank you. I understand the pleasure of council, and I think that it would put that project, the current vote, in jeopardy unless you do hear from the others. There's not just one group, there's a couple that would like to be speaking this evening. So I think if, with council's indulgence, I'm going to allow the presenters to make comments this evening before we present this vote. You may be in jeopardy of losing the vote or the support unless we do hear from the others. So I think it's in the best wisdom to allow those parties to speak if they wish. So I'm going to entertain that. And if we can allow the parties 10 minutes maximum, please, I have to tell you that that's important. We have heard the gist of a lot of the benefits, but I think if you could just be concise. So who would you like to have first? Downtown BIA, councillor Maves?
No, your worship, I'm just wondering, is that motion still on the floor?
It's still on the floor. We're just going to hold it.
Are we going to hold that? Okay.
Okay. Table, yeah, table motion. Okay, so pleasure of council, then. We have the downtown BIA present. Councillor Peter Angelo, who's going to move that motion?
Well, there is a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we do have a motion on the floor. Okay, let's let them go ahead.
Is the cat going to talk?
We have some visitors here today.
Okay, 10 minutes is ticking.
10 minutes.
We have a PowerPoint presentation that we'd like to load up, and Electra would like to give it to whomever will load it up for us.
That'd be Dean.
Dean, are you the man?
I'm debating.
First of all, I think that the city can generate revenue if they would just open up some of the issues that I have to do with the downtown to a reality show. Probably NBC or CBS would be offering quite a bit of money for the rights. You know, as this presentation is loading up, I just would like to make a few quick valid points to council. First of all, I find it extremely interesting that we refer to the downtown as down there. Last I checked, the downtown is down here. So, and we're all down here. This is where people in the community view their civic pride. This is where you have your city hall. And I think, and I think subliminally and subconsciously, what has happened over many years is that even people who work in this office, subconsciously, because of the deterioration that has taken place, view the downtown as down there, even though it's down here. So I'd like to make that point going forward. I'd also like to make a point that I think that this stimulating stimulus project, we need to ask the question of, what is it here to stimulate? And I would make the recommendation to council that you're not here to stimulate your plumbing. You're here to stimulate your future generations. You're here to stimulate the arts. You're here to stimulate private families who are investing their life into their business. You're here to stimulate economic growth, and you're here to stimulate a future for the people in Niagara Falls that everybody can be proud of. So that's what I would call a stimulus program.
Let us begin, please, with the question.
Members of council, you know, we've sort of gone backwards on the right, you know, way to revitalize the downtown. I've sort of taken a huge leap of faith. And the leap of faith that we've taken, and many stakeholders have taken, and the people who are here tonight, who didn't just want to bang on their TV screens, but actually came out to support what's important to them feel, is that, is that, you know, we've taken a giant leap of faith, saying, if we show you what we can do, if we come up with $30, $40 million of active projects in the downtown, if we create a, if the BIA makes a self-sacrifice of tripling their budget to $500,000 a year, where poor people are going to be doing festivals and events for the local community, we believe that at the right opportunity, the city will jump on board and say, you know, my God, if we invest 1.5 or so million dollars, and we can get the province and the fed to really complete this project, we would go ahead and do this. And anybody that would have came to this council and would have presented that they will do what we have done in the downtown, that they will bring in a skating rink, that they will bring in the arts, that they'll bring in world-class Canadian artists, that they'll bring in the buttery, they'll bring in the brewery, they'll bring in non-for-profit theaters, they'll redo 27 buildings, they'll bring in festivals and events, and they'll do it all in a year. But what they ask for council is, is to invest this minute investment that typical cities spend over $100 million for, and go after federal and provincial money. I think this vote over here would be unanimous. It wasn't a long time ago that this very council voted to spend $12 million in the downtown over a 20-year period, which adds up to $600,000 a year, which would be in excess, substantially in excess of what we're asking for right now. It's extremely important for me to make two points, and I'd like to make these two points quickly. The first point I'd like to make is that there's a very, very big difference between the downtown right now and any other project that you're considering. And that is that we are almost there. We, as a downtown, are almost there. You already almost have one of the nicest downtowns of any city in North America. You are already a world-class city. You already have entertainment. You already have an opportunity for your young people. We are almost there. We need a little bit just to cross over to the finish line to really, really, really make this a place that the entire world talks about, that when people in Niagara Falls go to visit Paris, they tell the people in France, what do you know about culture? Come visit Niagara Falls. We're the king of culture. So we're almost there, and I think it's important to discuss what it takes to get us there, and what the results would be if we get there. First of all, there's also one other point I'd like to make, and I just move forward very quickly. And that is, is that it's important for the council members and the community to understand why downtowns don't revitalize themselves. And the reason why downtowns don't revitalize themselves is because downtowns are similar to a hand. And just like, God forbid, if somebody's missing a finger or two fingers, their hand is really useless, downtown is an experience that is worth more than the sum of its parts. If you put a theater in a downtown, the theater will fail. If you do street beautification in a downtown, it will not attract business. If you bring artists to downtown, they will fail. If you bring restaurants to downtown, they will fail. If you bring a brewery to downtown, it will fail. And if you do events in a downtown, it will fail. But if you do them all together, then the sum total of all these pieces really, really creates something extremely special that stimulates the private sector and the creative class to really create amazing things and amazing places, and things that we can't even predict. In Quebec, old Montreal had a bunch of buskers, and they created Cirque du Soleil. No one ever imagined what Quebec City is going to, what Quebec City was going to create. What happens when you create the right environment for our young people, who are educated, our artists, our talent to express itself, to meet the locals and to meet the tourists, and we turn this into a great incubator, then what happens is something really, really amazing that is much more than any of the pieces and the parts that we are dealing with. And let's talk about what the downtown really needs in order to be completed as a magnificent project. The first thing is, is we need to have some type of real gateway and real entranceway. To have over 3,000 linear feet entering River Road, with River Road looking the way it is, and nobody imagining what's behind it, is really, really an impossibility. And we really need to do something to send a powerful message saying, hey, you know, there is a reason to be in Niagara Falls an extra night. There's a reason to be in Niagara Falls an extra day. If you're a Trontonian and you've seen the falls, there's a reason for you to come back here. Right? So we have the roundabout and the eastern gateway. I think it's extremely important that we have a really phenomenal live theater experience. We are opening up CATS in mid-May, and we're really excited about that. But we need to talk about the challenges with a theater that only has 300 seats. It's very, very hard to really create the vibrancy that we need, 150 nights a year with so few seats. And it's like a home. You know, any real estate agent will tell you that you can have the nicest home, but if you don't have a decent garden and a decent entranceway, then when you put your home on the market, it's not going to attract buyers. And so our street needs to look beautiful. We need to beautify our street so that the interior of the stores match the exterior of the stores. And those are the three things that would compete, complete the downtown. Go ahead. We have the eastern gateway, which are all, you can see over here clearly, and the challenge of how long it is and how small it is on River Road. The city had already done some significant architectural engineering on a roundabout. City staff estimates that that roundabout would be approximately $1.6 million. We already have allocated in the $1.5 million project that has been, that's in council's package, we've allocated $500,000 to the gateway. So that would only add about an additional $1.1 million, out of which the city's contribution would be about $380,000. And, you know, it's clear to see, you know, what the roundabout would do in terms of, A, turning River Road into a great park. I mean, people will jog in front of River Road and everything, but also in terms of traffic and really beautifying our downtown. We're opening up with the Seneca, and Burlington is in the process of doing a performing art center for roughly $34 million. Other cities have invested many, many millions of dollars to stimulate the arts through giving the community a place where community theater, community events, and all sorts of fantastic things could take place. We have that opportunity for between $2 and $2.5 million. Our theater is in great condition, and we've already revitalized it to take 300 seats. But, you know, 300 seats is not going to be enough to program that theater properly, and it also will not be a big enough theater for the community and the high schools and the other peoples to use when it's really important for them. And so we have this unbelievable opportunity where, for very little money, our city will have what other cities spend $30 million on. As well, the property behind the theater belongs to the city. We would need to use five or 10 feet of that property to expand the theater into it. I currently own the theater. I never intended on owning the theater. I only purchased it because I knew it was going to be a vital key and component of cultural downtown. And we would just put it into a non-for-profit entity run by the city, and drawings are already in process, and the structure is almost complete. So this is certainly a facility that can go forward very, very quickly.
Mr. Grun, we have two minutes left.
Okay, so if we would be, if we would be putting in streetscap and beautifications, you'd be looking at about $4,967,100 for the total downtown. And this will stimulate, I kid you not, and the many hundreds of millions of dollars in investments in the future. This is actually the only investment that the city can do that will have a return, that will bring the residential taxpayer profit, that will lower the cost of the residential taxpayer. Because right now, we have other parts of the city that need many millions of dollars in infrastructure, but don't generate any revenue because they've fallen into decrepancy. And so the residential tax base is beginning to pay for infrastructure and the commercial tax base, instead of it being the other way around. And here's a real opportunity to save the taxpayer money for many, many years to come. And our cultural district is one more reason to stay longer in Niagara. And, you know, I just would like to thank council and his honor for listening to us. This is not new. Other cities in the worst economic crises have done everything in their power to revitalize. No city has ever regretted revitalizing their downtown, and no city has ever lost money revitalizing their downtown. And no city, and there's no resident of any city that will ever tell you that he preferred that their downtown revitalization money went into sewer and infrastructure. God willing, when this town, downtown is successful, it will generate substantial revenue for this government and for this municipality. It will also give us a future for our children who currently don't have a future and leave Niagara Falls as soon as they're in their early, late teens, and when they finish university, they don't come back here. It will help the economic job prospects and business prospects of the people that are in Niagara Falls. It will help hundreds and thousands of people make a livelihood doing things that they love and enjoy, and it'll bring a great quality of life, and make the people in Niagara Falls really proud of their city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grun. Now, there may be questions by members of council. So pleasure of council. Some questions for Mr. Grun with regard to the roundabout. Anything further? Councillor Carrion?
Thank you, your worship. So, Mordecai, through you, your worship, the total project cost is $4,967,000?
Yes, out of which the theater is about 2.3.
And on this project, the application to the stimulus project, how much would the city be, what would you look for from the city?
Well, that's for council to discuss. So either we can go after all this as one project, 4.9 going after the stimulus program for this, or maybe we could split it out, and part of it can go into the BCF grant, and part of it into stimulus grants. Preferably, this would be one grant going forward in the stimulus package. And that's what we'd prefer. But there's various opportunities in front of council. We can let it break $2 million out of this and move it into the BCF application.
Councillor, one more, please, Mr. Grun. Councillor Peter Angelo to that point.
Your worship, perhaps I can answer councillor Carrion's question. I think that if it's the total project cost, if you divide it by three, then that's what we're hoping for. However, and staff can confirm- However, and staff, firmly, Worship, there are, there are already monies that are allocated to downtown to the tune of, is it $518,000?
Yeah. Maybe Mr. Dulevik can address this issue.
Through Your Worship, yeah, as council's previously proved, it's about $518,000, $519,000. About $100,000 from the region, and the, and the rest is coming from the ISF.
So, I'm getting about 1.65, uh, the city contribution from that number there. And if you reduce it by a little over $500,000, then you're looking at about a $1.18 contribution from the city.
Yeah. Okay. Counselor Carrio has answered the question, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so, now, the question is, I guess, Mr. Dulevik, you want to address the matter. Can we bundle these together?
Through Your Worship, uh, that's a concern to staff. Um, going back to BCF and ISF, that's, that's what you got left. You've got three ISF applications, one BCF application. If you split the project up, there's no more applications. Uh, clearly, in the ISF documentation, and they talk about it too in the BCF, you can't bundle projects. They would view this as bundling. Uh, this happened with the museum when they applied under the BCF for the entire legacy project, if you may recall. That was a $12 million project. They only got money for the museum because when, when museum staff were talking to staff in the province, uh, they talked about the three components. The museum, the gateway feature, and unfortunately, I forget the third component. But there was, it was part of the legacy project, but it was in three different areas, and they clearly said, "No, you can only apply for one of the three." And they applied for, for the one that was of most value, which was the museum site itself. Uh, so, I would definitely see the theater as being a separate project from the rest of it. The other issue is, is that the theater is a, is a private property, and if you look at the ISF, uh, it doesn't allow for private, uh, there are private applications, but they're talking about ports, like, uh, for a cruise ship, and I forget what the other was. And then, that funding is only down to 25%. So, there are some limitations on private sector assets. Short line railway infrastructure and port and cruise ship infrastructure. That's the only thing that you comply for under private sector assets. So, um, I don't see how the theater would qualify. Uh, and, and then, then we'd have to look at the rest as one, as part of the one contiguous project from Eastern Gateway to Western Gateway. Uh, I think we could try to put that all together as one project in that regard. There may be some challenges, but, you know, we would, we would, uh, do it as staff.
Beautification?
Do the beautification, like with the reconstruction of the gateways and the work in between as one project. But I, I see some real problems with the theater, um, in itself as being a separate project and it being a, a private asset.
Um, Your Worship, can we talk to him?
Sure.
Yes. First of all, I just would like to address the theater being a private asset. I think in our presentation, uh, that I just made, I made it clear that, uh, if council votes to put this into stimulus, um, the theater will not be a private asset. Uh, I never intended for the theater to be a private asset. I always intended for the theater to be a community asset. And included in this cost are the costs that it would take for the community or the, uh, charity or the nonprofit, whichever way, uh, city staff would recommend that, uh, this go forward, um, assuming, uh, the actual property, land, and everything in the theater. So, $2.3 million doesn't just include the renovation of the theater. It actually includes owning the theater, um, the city owning the theater or a charity owning the theater, and we can make that transfer, uh, very quickly. Um, I would also like to point out, as far as the stimulus package goes, uh, we've done a lot of research. Um, I, very often, uh, downtown, uh, is looked at one, as one giant package and one giant plan. Even this council has one time at, uh, different periods, looked at various components in the downtown as one giant downtown revitalization package. Um, it's more likely to be a political decision than any other decision. And, you know, we're prepared to take the risk that the bureaucrats will, will, will disallow part of the application. We'll still be ahead of where we are right now. And, uh, and, and we think, being that they're in such a hurry to, uh, put it to real projects that stimulate, um, this will pass their, their most important criterias, and they'll let it go.
Yes. Mr. Dulevik?
Yeah, through Your Worship, we have some more comments. Very clearly, uh, again, I'm getting even more concerned talking about transfer of property. It's very clear in the documentation, purchase of land, buildings, and all that are not eligible for funding. And on top of that, if this becomes a city facility, where are we going to get the operating costs? Uh, more than likely, I, I, you know, there's a potential for deficit. Is the city then going to be on the hook for those operating losses on a yearly basis and, and, and take care of that operation? So, there's some real concerns. I mean, this is the first that city, that city staff has heard of this, and these are just a couple of things that come to mind quickly. I'm sure if staff had some time, uh, we'd probably have a long list of concerns that we would bring forward to this council. But I think clearly, um, this whole theater aspect is a concern to, to myself, judging by the documentation I've read, uh, when you're talking about land transfers, they, they won't accept the purchase of land or facilities as part of being an eligible cost.
Okay. Now, Counselor DiDaddy?
I appreciate staff's opinion on this. However, we're chart, going into uncharted waters, and it's first time through. And, uh, I think there are much, many more questions than answers. I've spoken with some other senior staff of some other municipalities, and they feel that this is, uh, a big unknown. And I believe, you know, we have to look at what the issue is here. The issue isn't about, uh, giving cities some money to help them redevelop. It's about stimulating the economy. This is a major issue going on. They're looking for any groups that are willing to step up, put people to work, and build things. And I believe here, if the group, first of all, is willing to move forward and risk the theater part being disallowed, let's move forward. Who are we to stand in their way for this city to redevelop and finally move in the area that we're deserving? Your Worship, there's a lot of opinions, and, and like noses, we all have them. If they're willing to take the risk, I'm willing to put it on the table. Thank you, Worship.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Carrio?
The problem with that is, is you're taking the risk with the taxpayers' dollars because this project could take the place of a project that would have no questions. My fear would be if we took this risk and they threw that out and didn't pick this project, that we could have picked the project, going back to what I said before, save the money. If you want to give them some money, give them some money for money that we save by getting projects that aren't going to be questioned, that aren't going to have anything that might get thrown out. I don't know. Mr. Dulevik seems pretty convinced that some of these things don't fit. I'm not an expert. I don't know any of the other councils that are experts on this package. I don't know. I don't want to take a gamble, but I don't want to lose the project either.
Counselor DiDaddy, Counselor Anony?
Yes, Your Worship, you know, less the theater, it's still a major project, honor books, and if you want to compare it to anything else. I don't think anybody in the room can read the minds of the federal members. I don't think anybody in you, Worship, have had some one-on-one discussions and dialogue. And maybe you could enlighten us as to the, the rationale behind this, because they're not going to throw out the whole project. It's not at risk. It's at risk of not moving forward with the project properly. We know it's a critical mass situation. You know, you don't piecemeal something like this. You do it all, you do it right, and we move forward. We've already made a commitment to this downtown for a certain amount of money. We have a chance to lighten that load of our commitment. Your Worship, maybe could you enlighten us with your discussions?
No, Counselor, I'd love to be, but I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I wouldn't, it's a technical point. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer. And, and again, just what staff is advising and what we're hearing tonight is a question. So, Counselor Anony, do you have a comment?
I, I, I'm confused because I just heard a big unknown. Well, we just passed a 0% budget because we said we didn't want to pull anything over to the taxpayers. Um, he appreciates staff's opinion. I, I, we count on staff's opinion. This is a lot of money. Um, we have infrastructure projects, and I, and I listened to Mr. Grun. He almost had me convinced until he, he said he owned the theater. And then, Mr. Dulevik talking about how that isn't even going to fit into the project. We, we have gone this route before with this downtown. We've committed up to $12 million over 20 years. I'm very clear, it was my motion four times, so I know what the motion was. Haven't, haven't voted against one CIP project down there. And, and I'm confused, I'm concerned that Counselor Carrio is absolutely right. We have projects that could comply. This has no impact on city funding. I think we need financially, and I thought we were here to be the best fiscal, um, advocates for taxpayers' money. I think we need to look at what's going to save the taxpayers the most. I, I, I don't know if we can throw out Mr. Dulevik's opinion, and Counselor, uh, DiDaddy said that it would save us on our CIP money. Will it save us on our CIP commitment? Maybe through you to a member of staff, because I watched the clerk shake his head, "No, it wouldn't." And I read, you said you didn't, I had read a lot of how things would comply and how they wouldn't comply. Uh, I don't know how bendable that is. "Oh, we'll look at this whole project. If you take this out..." I think they look at the application as put forward, that the federal government isn't pulling bits and pieces out of an application. They're looking at the application as an entity. So, if I'm wrong on how I read it, could somebody please correct me? Because, uh, maybe through to Mr. Dulevik, are they going to look at this application and say, "Well, the theater doesn't comply. Let's take the 2.3 out, and we'll look at 2.6," or whatever it will be? Or are they going to look at it and say, "This doesn't match the components"?
Mr. Dulevik, can you answer that question?
Because everything I read...
Through Your Worship, it's, it's just not a matter of opinion. There, there are things here that are in black and white when it talks about eligible projects. And under the listing of private sector assets, it talks about, for private sectors, I talked about before, short line rail, infrastructure, port and cruise ship infrastructure. And I do know that, that they will fund that at a lesser amount, and I believe, uh, I think it was just 25% of total eligible costs on private sector assets. Now, ineligible costs, and then it says here, ineligible costs associated with a project will not be reimbursed under the infrastructure stimulus fund and include the following. And it talks about land acquisition, leasing land, buildings, equipment, and other facilities, real estate fees, and related costs. I mean, our interpretation of that is that, you know, buying land, buying a building is not something that they would fund. Because, I mean, the whole point of the fund is, is to gen, is to stimulate the economy, not to buy a piece of building, that, uh, uh, to buy an asset. I think if you were to renovate the asset, there may be some, some issues involved, but not funding the actual purchase of an asset or purchase of land.
I, I would just like to speak to, to two issues. Um, first of all, um, we don't necessarily need this, uh, the city to buy the asset. I think there are creative ways that this asset could be, um, uh, rolled over to a charity, and we can come into an agreement, uh, with the city, um, in terms of, of, of other things, in other ways that, that help them happen. And, uh, we do not need anybody to buy this asset from us. Okay? This is a community asset, and the actual asset represents a very, very small portion of the cost of, of, of the $2.3 million. Um, the second thing I'd just like to point out is, is, uh, no city has ever saved itself to prosperity. And if the strategy of our council is going to be that during this recession, we're going to save ourselves to prosperity, we're going to find half of this community unemployed, we're going to find that this community has no new businesses, we're going to find that other tourist areas have taken the lead and have turned their cities into amazing world-class cities while we, uh, were busy thinking that we can save ourselves into prosperity. Um, cities that are successful are the cities that, uh, know how to work with the private sector in a way, uh, that enhances the social needs of their community. They know how to leverage money in a way that, uh, enhances the needs of their community, and they really know how to make their place a great, uh, city for people to live in. And then, that generates revenue for the taxpayers. If, uh, our downtown was not decrepit, and Main and Ferry was not decrepit, um, the taxpayer that's in the city right now would be paying much less taxes. So, um, if we want to save the taxpayer money, we have to make sure that, uh, our commercial base works from a revenue perspective, and this has been well-established for 40 years now by many cities, and there's, uh, countless studies that have been done by every country and every, uh, and every, uh, province in the world on this issue. And on top of that, um, it really, really, really stimulates, um, not, not one or two or three people, uh, becoming, uh, gazillionaires, but it stimulates hundreds of people becoming successful. A bunch of many little successes, which is what Niagara Falls really needs. I also would like to make one more, one more point. If, uh, all the members that are here for the downtown can please just stand up and show your support.
Yes, thank you. Good, thank you. Good, thank you. Uh, Mr. Grun, thank you very much, but the clerk would like to offer counsel some advice.
Um, just one quick thing, and then I'm leaving. Um, the only, I think the only questionable project on this streetscape and beautification is the theater. I think none of the other components, uh, are questionable as far as suiting that, uh, suiting this, uh, this, uh, infrastructure project. And I just would like to, uh, have staff clarify that that's correct.
I'm just going to be doing that, Mr. Grun. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Please be seated. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Dulevik?
Yeah, through Your Worship, and I, and I think I, I said earlier on, I, I think the theater is, is a great concern to staff here. I mean, that's the, and, and some of the additional comments that Mr. Grun made at the end there are cause of even greater concern. So, I, I mean, for, from a staff perspective and everything we read to make it really clean, uh, you know, we could, uh, support from a staff perspective. I think that the project, uh, without the theater, which amounts to about $2.7 million, if you're looking at a third, a third, a third, that, you know, it's $900,000 from the city, so that would be an approximate additional $380,000 that would be an ask from the city if this project was successful, on top of the $518,000, $519,000 that the, the city's already committed to this project. So, I think that gives you an idea of some of the numbers. Hopefully, my math is correct, but I think it's close enough.
The clerk wishes to offer some advice to council as well.
I mean, you know, I think staff is of the clear opinion that the theater doesn't fit. Now, will that mean that the whole project get rejected by the bureaucrats that look at it? I don't know. But why would you want to take that chance? Uh, it's not owned by the city. You know, as Ed had said earlier, I mean, you're looking at two separate projects under the funding formula. So, I think your, your best, staff's recommendation is you can't bundle the theater with the other project.
Okay. Counselor Anony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have no more questions, Mr. Grun. I'd like to, I know that we have other groups here, and I, I think if we're going to be fair, um, we have the Lundys Lane Museum Group who are also here and would like to speak...
Yes, we'll be hearing that from them as well. Any other questions of, uh, of the downtown BA with respect to this? Mr. Grun? Okay. Having seen none, we'll move on to the next presenter. Thank you very much. Does someone else would like to make a presentation? Please come forward. It's on behalf of the... Okay. Mr. Jackson, presenting on behalf of?
On behalf of the Niagara Falls Board of Museums.
Thank you.
I'm going to stand and hold my foot.
Just the benefit of, for those watching, if you'd just identify yourself, please.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Your Worship, Chair Selsey, and councilors, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I'm really quite intimidated. I, uh, I think I should have dressed up our Chair Gord West and, uh, some kind of costume and, and created a little bit of excitement around this presentation. Our presentation will truly be brief. If we had been allowed to bundle the total Lundys Lane Battlefield Legacy Project, I'm absolutely convinced that we would not be here tonight. I'm, I'm totally convinced by our, um, our consideration of, of both the MP and the MPP, uh, that we would have had full support for the project. Unfortunately, as Mr. Dulevik already points out, that was not possible. We chose the bigger of, uh, of the three, uh, arms of the project, and we were, you were, as a city, successful in that project. A second arm of it is, uh, to do some, uh, significant work in connection with the National Historic Site, which is at the Drummond Hill Cemetery area. And we have applied for a special grant for national historic sites to get that particular work done. So, we're here to, uh, talk about the very last part, but a very integral part of the Battlefield Legacy Project, which is the Gateway Walkway. Uh, each of you did receive, uh, some correspondence from the board, and, uh, I don't mean to reiterate it, but I, I do want to stress a number of things. The Gateway Walkway, thank you very much, Mr. Idi. The Gateway Walkway is not something new that we just concocted and decided to come new that we just concocted and decided to come down and talk to you about tonight. This was an integral part of the project right from the very beginning. You have on the screen a, a rendering from the architect that, that we have engaged to prepare this, namely Chapman Murray and Wayne Murray in particular. And the cost for that particular Gateway Walkway will be, will be $1.5 million. The project was generated by an all-inclusive group of, of people who had a stake in that particular, in this particular development. The city was directly involved in the committee. The region was involved in the committee. The Lundys Lane BIA was involved. The Main and Ferry BIA was involved. The historical groups, the Friends of the Battlefield and the Lundys Lane Historical Society were involved, and of course, the Board of Museum was involved. That rendering is the unanimous choice of, of that particular group to go forward, to complete our legacy project. It will be incredible for this city when that is built. My prediction to you is that aside from the falls, which obviously will be well photographed by visitors to our city, that this will be one of the must-see, must-photograph structures in our city. And as those photographs go back home and across the world, they're going to entice all kinds of people to come to our city. I really believe that the legacy project, which I tend to call Gettysburg North, certainly not on the scale of Gettysburg, but certainly on the scale of importance of Gettysburg for us in Canada and our development as a nation, this will become an attraction by itself. So we are looking for you to support our application, to finish off the legacy project of the $1.5 million. Obviously, the city portion is $500,000, but as you remember, we are committed to raise a total of $2 million towards this total project. So the city commitment is $250,000. And not in 2009, obviously. It will be in 2010. And we can guarantee you that that project will be finished and completed in time for the, the drop dead date in the application process of, in 2011. So that's our pitch. That's what you're going to see. It's a signature piece of architecture that'll change the face of Lundys Lane forever, and it will be a piece of legacy that you, as a counsel, will be proud to have sponsored in terms of the Building Canada program.
Thank you. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship, and I guess through yourself to Mr. Jackson. Thanks very much for the presentation. The bridge is absolutely strong. What an addition it is to Lundys Lane. I know, I'll speak for myself, I'm looking for, and I know the price tag that this one carries is around one and a half million, but I'm looking to submit as much as I possibly can. Staff has told us that there is no limit as to what we can submit. So, while I like the project, and I would imagine that in the future, counsel will support this project. I'm not convinced that it will go through right now. There are bigger projects that we have, that we can choose. The only question I have, though, is in regards to, you said if you were able to bundle with the museum project, was this submitted with the museum project?
No, it was, it was identified. We could not submit it because, in fact, it, it was a separate address, if you will. You know, almost as simple as that. The, the only comment I would want you to consider is that you always have to have a Plan B. I didn't come in here with a Plan B today because I thought our Plan A would, would sell itself, for sure. But certainly, our Plan B could be along the lines of, of Counselor Carrio, when he suggested that if there is some savings to the city on some of the other bigger projects, that you may wish to consider allocating some of those funds to support this project. It is essential that we do this.
Perhaps, Mr. Jackson, you might outline your partners as well in this project. I understand Lundys Lane BIA, when I was with them, you had some time to have a commitment from them, is that correct?
Yes. What our plan is, on the 25th of May, we will be coming to counsel to be present, hopefully this is the timeline, for the Architectural Services, RFP, to be approved, not the RFP, the actual awarding of the, the contract for the museum. At that time, I will be bringing with me some of the major capital investors to our $2 million part of the...
But in this project, the Gateway project itself, do you have Lundys Lane BIA support, or are they contributing any?
Oh, yes, we have, we have their support. But once again, we're looking at our fundraising as a totality, not as this versus this versus this. So, that are $2 million.
Any other questions of Mr. Jackson? Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. Are there any other groups wishing to make a presentation this evening? Once again, are there any other groups who want you to make a presentation this evening? And for the third time, is there somebody back there? Please come forward. Do you wish to make a presentation? Please come forward.
My name is Jean Grandoni, and I want to speak in opposition to the Northwest Servicing. It's the most irregular business I have seen come through this town yet. You got a certificate of approval for only a four-inch main. At the same time, you want to expand the boundary in this area. Now, if you put in that four-inch main, force main, you're going to have to dig it up if you get approval to develop the whole 200 acres because the four inches isn't big enough. So this whole procedure is, it's out of phase, and it's premature to apply for money for the Northwest Servicing. And of course, we get the sewage, there's no capacity in the pumping station. What's going on here is the most outrageous business I have ever seen in my 30 years of seeing what's going on here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dulevik, do you wish to address the technical issues at all? Mr. Holman?
Mr. Mayor, we have a certificate of approval from the Ministry of Environment, and the pump station collection system is designed to correct the existing problem that's there, and that's what that project is all about.
So we do have approval. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Thompson?
Well, you know, this has been going on for I don't know how many years to try to bring that sector into the municipal boundaries, the urban boundaries. That hasn't happened, so why would we be discussing putting a sewer out there until such time as we know whether it's in the urban boundaries, you know? I, I think that it's premature to look at it at this time. I know that the Club of Talia is even suggesting that they upfront load the, the financing, but, you know, it could all change. I agree with Ms. Grandoni that this is premature. How do you, maybe this is going to be in the urban boundaries, maybe it's not. If it is, then it's going to change entirely. If it isn't, then, then we can always do it in the future. I don't disagree with the comment.
Can we have Mr. Dulevik address that issue?
Yeah, through your worship, I, I can't argue with Counsel Thompson on that one. I mean, as Mr. Holman said, I mean, this is to address the problem that's out there right now. This would be at Club of Talia's expense. It's not only them, but some of their neighbors that they chose to hook up to it. That's, that's what we went for. The, and then there's a whole separate issue about expanding the urban boundary and such, and we don't know if that will happen, but I, I mean, if it does happen, it's still, I think, several years away, speaking optimistically, if that were to happen. And, and if that happens, then, yes, everything does change, then, you know, it's within the urban boundary, the DC issues come into, development charges come into play, is the pumping station the right size? All those things come into question there, so, yes, that could very well happen.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Carrio?
We ask questions about other things, other than question on the one that's on here, the transit operations facility. What, what is our plan as we speak today? Do we have a plan on replacing our transit operation facility other than, other than...
Through your worship, it's, it's, it's very difficult. I know we had it there. It's questionable whether it's doable. I mean, it'd have to be really fast-tracked if we were to get that done in two years. I mean, you know, there's a, there's land that's an issue. That's just building costs right there. We don't even have concept plans done, so...
That's a questionable one?
That's a questionable one. As we've gathered more information, it really is questionable now. We probably should have changed the yes there to maybe.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Counsel Diodati?
Just wondering, your worship, we have a motion on the floor. If we can take that vote, I'd like to put another motion on the floor.
Sure. I just wanted to clearly issue what, any other issues? Counsel Maves?
I'm just wondering here, if we, if we take the four projects we talked about, the Boys and Girls Club, the Drummond Road Sewers, and the other sewer projects, that's basically going to save us roughly $10 million in, in taxes down the road. So this will, will this free up some money in those years for other projects that are on this list?
Okay, they're just consulting here. Mr. Burden, there's a question by Counsel Maves.
Will this free up other monies? We put through those four projects, we would have $10 million basically given us, given us by our...
More than ten.
More than, more than 10 million. So that would free up some money so that some of these other projects can go forward, such as our Walkway and some of these other things. Is that not correct?
Mr. Burden?
Through your worship, several of these projects are from Tab 8. You must understand that these were not considered in the capital five-year program. The reason why we are considering these projects is because this money is available now through the ISF and the BCF. So we're taking advantage of federal funding. If the funding wasn't there, we would not be doing these Tab 8 projects, period.
I'm, I'm looking at these things, I'm looking at sewer separations and whatnot as a must, so we would have to do these down the road anyway. So I, I'm thinking they would be, they would be in our budgets down the road, and so I'm thinking we're obviously going to save more than $10 million if we pass those.
Through your worship, that is correct. Just again, to reiterate, when we constructed the capital budget, Tab 8 was put there to identify those projects on a page ago basis that we did not have funding for. Now that we have the federal funding, we can consider some of those Tab 8 projects. So you're quite right, you can take advantage, and it does save us in the long run.
And I believe one of the criteria under the stimulus fund was that they be projects that weren't being considered, and that was part of the consideration.
But these are things that we, down the road, we'd have to do probably anyway, so...
Well, that's right, but again...
And, and as I say, it would free up some money down the road for these other projects that we can keep on the drawing board.
The government said, basically, if you have projects that you would not have normally done, those are the ones that they're trying to stimulate some investment into. I have, okay, I have Counsel Wing and Counsel Thompson.
I'd just like to suggest that not only might it free up money to use for projects down the road, it also might free up money so that we don't have to increase taxes in future years. And my understanding is that one of the things that attracts businesses to establish in a community or to remain in a community is the amount of taxes that they have to pay, and that's a large part of, one of the things they consider. Of the projects that are on our list and are achievable within the timeframe and are in the eligible categories, the Boys and Girls Club, I guess, is going to have to go for the BCF funding because it doesn't qualify for the infrastructure stimulus fund under any of the categories I see here. There, where does it, that, somebody's... Cultural? I have a problem seeing it's cultural. I, I see it as the new recreation under the...
Mr. Dulevik wishes to make comment?
Yeah, sorry, through your worship, under not-for-profit sectors, they, they do have a, a heading called Community Centers and Community Services Infrastructure. So Boys and Girls Club would fall under Community Services Infrastructure because they are providing community service.
I don't, I don't see that in the AMO communication I'm using.
Uh, yeah, yeah. And if you look at the ISF guidelines, yeah. Unfortunately, some, some of the communiques aren't complete, but we, if you look at the guidelines, that's what it would fall, fall under.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at what AMO has included, and there are a list of categories of projects that are eligible for infrastructure stimulus funding, isn't in alphabetical order, so I'm not sure what kind of order they put it in, but I note that water and wastewater infrastructure is right at the top of the list. And I looked through the projects that are achievable in the timeframe, are eligible, and if you want to know what the potential cost savings, you know, if you want to rank it by potential cost savings, number one on the list is the Dussen Buchanan Slater Avenue Storm Sewer Separation. 4.4 million can be saved. Number two is Ryle Street. That's storm sewer separation, 2.5 million. Number three would be Transit Coaches, Coach Enhatment, 2.1 million. And number four is actually the Sylvia Place Market redevelopment, renewing our building there. That's, that's 2 million. So those are your top four, and Ryle Street's on the floor, and I was actually making that a motion for both of them, Ryle and Dessen Buchanan Slater, because those are still our two top projects. I realize I was forced to split it, but as soon as we vote on Ryle, then I'd like to immediately put the other half of my motion on the floor, which is the Dussen Buchanan Slater project.
Well, we can talk with that. Counsel Thompson?
This is really a lot of fun tonight. I love how we're got millions and millions of dollars to spend in projects that were on the list for future years. We're going to save so much money, we're going to be able to put up the, the bridge over Lundys Lane, we're going to have so much money for it. Where are we going to get the money? We just passed our budget. Where's the money going to come for our participation in this project?
Question to staff? Mr. Burden?
I guess I, I got to deliver the news. With respect to the Boys and Girls Club, that's a new expenditure, and more than likely, we'd be looking at borrowing that money. And that's how it was identified under Tab 8. Again, as, as Mr. Burden was saying, Tab 8, we never had any money there. If you wanted to do those projects, you were going to be borrowing, and that's what you're talking about there. With Drummond Road, we did, well, up until what happened with the, on the infrastructure side, we have some dollars for the Drummond Road project, not all the dollars now, so there's a potential there, that we can finance that through, through, once we get that, and then using the doll, the dollars that we have available right now, we can leverage it and, and complete the project without some additional funding, but we'd have to look at that in detail. But again, as you go back to any of these other projects, you're eliminating a future debenture, so we still have to come up with our one-third of the money. Now, where's that going to come from? We, we, and I think as Mr. Harris may talk about, I mean, we're looking at some future years' dollars that we, we're borrowing from the future to, to do some of that work today and short-term finance until future budgets can pay for our share.
We don't even have the money in hand unless we tap into the fund that was sold to the property out on Drummond Road. We don't have the money.
We would short-term finance it, but that goes to the heart of what this program's all about. It's about stimulating the economy, so they're looking for us to come up with some new dollars.
Well, I'm getting a great deal of humor out of the fact that we're saving all these millions of dollars that we can utilize on other projects. We got $11 million next year as a deficit before we even start, and 16 million the next year.
And counselors, we do have a couple of projects, again, just so you keep in mind that there's no impact on city funding. I'll reiterate those points, the downtown streetscaping is one without the additional extra work, so that money is, could be capitalized. We have, we committed $500,000 or $400,000 plus 100 from the region, so there is no addition to the capital debt. And also, I, I'll point out again to the Northwest Senator, but we have other challenges with respect to that, that matter of getting those lands into the urban boundary. So we have some decisions to make, and Mr. Clerk, we have a motion on the floor. Could you read the motion, please?
We're putting forward the Ryle Street Sewer Separation Project for infrastructure funding consideration.
Okay, and just to qualify again from staff, the requirement for the Ryle Street funding, Mr. Dulevik, requirement by the city contribution for the Ryle Street funding is?
Through your worship, as it talks about it, an additional debenture, I mean, we would have to come up with one-third of that funding, so it'd be 1.1 million dollars.
1.1 additional dollars? Okay. The council has a very amount of information. Anything else you require? We'll call the vote.
Okay, Counsel Diodati?
Against.
Counsel Fisher?
Against.
Counsel Rayonni?
For.
Counsel Carrio?
Against.
Counsel Maves?
For.
Counsel Peter Angelo?
Opposed.
Counsel Thompson?
No.
Counseler Wing?
In favor.
Mayor Selsey?
Opposed.
It's defeated.
Okay. Counsel Diodati?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to put a motion forward at this time in regard to the downtown. I appreciate the fact, your worship, that we don't know the answer at this point to the theater aspect, and even still, with that part removed, we've got $518,000 already identifying toward the downtown. That still leaves that at a $2.7 million project, your worship, and I think, given the atmosphere that's happening right now with the, and the appetite for development that the federal government has put forward in, in partnership with the province, I would make the motion that we go for the full funding, your worship, and that would be my motion.
I'm pretty, your worship, I split my motion.
Well, Mr. Clerk, if you want to roll it up, please, just find you.
I didn't want to, but I was told I had to.
Well, we had to unfortunately deal with it that way. Please, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Okay. Pleasure, Counsel, do you want to deal with her second part of the motion?
I'm recording.
Yes, well, we did, we'd actually, she was going to combine it, so we can still do that. You still want to do that?
Combine the motion?
Yes. Is there a second, was, you, you second the motion?
Point of order. I wanted to combine them into one motion. I was told I couldn't do it, so I was made to split it. We voted on one half of it.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead, we'll proceed on that basis.
Okay, so the other half of my motion, then, is the Dussen Buchanan Slater Storm Sewer Separation, $4 million additional debenture eliminated. It's something we have to do anyhow. There's flooding problems there. We're going to save on the sewer, sewer end of it.
Counsel Rayonni, your second motion?
I'm recording.
Okay. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. Aside from the Drummond Road reconstruction, which carried the price tag of 6.2, this project here, which deals with Dussen Avenue, Buchanan Avenue, and Slater Avenue Storm Separation, is the next highest infrastructure project that we have in municipal works and books. I favor this project, your worship, in the simple standpoint that we gain a lot of dollars in other levels of government as well. As I've already mentioned in the past, there, there has been, there has been basement flooding problems in this area for years, and I think it's a good quickly to clean up the situation. I will support the motion.
And we'll ask... And we'll ask the Director of Public Works, again, just to qualify the issue with regard to the cost contribution from the city, Mr. Dulevik, in this motion, four point four.
Through your worship, again, it's one-third, so...
About one point...
Almost one point five, so...
Yes, one point four. Okay. Any other questions?
Recorded.
Recorded vote? All is, okay, recorded vote?
Okay, so you're putting forward the Des and Avenue, Buchanan Avenue, Slater Avenue service, storm separation for infrastructure funding consideration. Counselor Diodati?
For.
Counselor Fisher?
For.
Counselor Aiononi?
For.
Counselor Carrio?
For.
Counselor Maves?
For.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Wing?
In favor.
Mayor Selsey?
For.
Carries.
Okay. Now, Counselor Diodati?
Yes, worship. Again, I'm glad that, you know, we got that one done because we were supporting it. It made a lot of sense. And again, we put forward, I'd like to put forward the motion for the full amount for the four point nine and change, four point nine, six, seven, one for the downtown, your worship.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Counselor Thompson? Yes, Counselor Carrio?
Your worship, I could support the motion if the theater wasn't in it. We've been told by our engineer that it doesn't qualify. I mean, I think we're risking, I'll support it if you take it out, but we're risking their application by leaving it in. I think they've got a good chance of getting the money if you take it out. We're being told by the people who are doing the investigation on the stimulus package that it jeopardizes the package. Why would you want to risk them getting the money by including it? We're being told not to include it. I'll support it if you take it out. Can't support it if you take it out. I don't think it's fair to them.
Made the comment, thank you. Counselor Diodati?
Yes, worship. I'll tell you why I don't want to take it out yet, okay? I believe Counselor Peter Angelo had a good conversation with the people down there today, and it seems to us that it's new even for them. It's a work in progress, and the big issue is ownership. And if we're prepared not to buy a building or sell a building, but to be granted a building, that's a different issue. That's not black and white. That's very gray. And I would love to let staff have, ask a specific question of the people at the ISF Fund and find out. Because I agree with you, I don't want to blow it. However, I don't want to blow the chance that we could get it, and then I read about Burlington getting the money because they were able to put two together. Or we've got, let's face it, we've got a very influential member of parliament that lives right here, and if we can't make something happen now with the given environment, it's never happening for any community, your worship. So at this point, your worship, I would ask that we, that we move this forward the way it is, and if it turns out that they tell us you have to pare it back, or if it turns out that we get clarification for staff that it will work. And worst case, you know, at this point, it's the money. It's allocating the four point nine for the area. If we need to jockey it into something that fits, because I have a feeling there's going to be a lot of, with a one-page application, there's going to be a lot of applications that are going to be sent back to staff for some fine tuning.
Okay, I have two members of staff, which give counsel some advice, clerk and the solicitor. So, clerk?
I mean, getting back to the bundling issue, say we own the theater, which we don't, I don't see how that's streetscaped. A theater is a building, and you're talking about beautification. So to me, it is a total separate project, even discounting the fact we don't own the building.
Okay. Mr. Beeman?
One thing that I would just comment on this particular project, I know one thing is absolutely certain, legal costs are not covered by these programs. And I guarantee you, this thing is going to cost a lot of interest. There are quite a numerous different costs to the associated with the acquisition of the land for that roundabout, and the theater thing is going to be a debenture from a legal standpoint, it's going to be costly. So counsel, I know there are going to be additional costs associated with this particular proposal and beautiful as it is.
I have Counselor Thompson, Counselor Aiononi.
Well, I, I was going to suggest that we move forward with the motion to determine through staff initially before the final application goes in, if that is the case. But I'm hearing the story, both from the clerk and engineer and the solicitor, that this is, this is of concern. So I second the motion. I think maybe we, we have a no-win situation here. But I would, I would, I would second your motion with the proviso that the staff initially determine if, in fact, it would float or if it would not. But I'm concerned about the solicitor's comments with respect to the acquisition of land. Is he talking about the adjacent private ownership that is a problem?
Let's unqualify it. Mr. Beeman? Excuse me. Please. Mr. Beeman?
As the, Mr. Grun was just speaking to my friend, explaining to me that the triangle thing that he's showing me there, which is the one that was up on the screen, apparently require, doesn't require acquiring any land. The one I was commenting on was circular, which I know requires land, and that's the one that I saw up there. The, if we don't require any land, then that's those costs of the way. Like the guarantee of working out any kind of arrangement on that theater that's being discussed over here, transferring, trust arrangements, whatever the heck we're going to do, is going to cost a lot of money.
Okay, so we're all ready with the turnaround?
I'm relying on Mr. Grun on that. If the design that Mr. Grun tells me, the design he's looking at, which he understands is the one that's being proposed, which is not the one that was up on the screen, doesn't require land to be acquired.
Mr. Grun, please?
Yeah, just to clarify that, there were several options for the roundabouts. The exact one that was shown on the screen is not what was in the, in the report, but it still is a roundabout, and it still is with, it's totally within the city right-of-way, so there would not be land acquisition costs.
Okay. Counselor Thompson? Yep. All I can ask a question is, Counselor Diodati, do you want to amend your motion?
So we're okay? So basically...
No, just the theater.
I'm still saying there's significant costs, Counselor Diodati.
Well, yeah, okay, well, there's a certain cost if you don't do things. Your worship, my question is this, do we have any kind of grace period where staff can, can we put it in the motion as Counselor Thompson was suggesting, where staff can? Let's get an answer, because we're all talking about hypotheticals. We don't have the answer. We're guessing, we're assuming, let's get a real answer from the feds so we can get a real direct, so we know no other community is going to get what we're asking.
That was Counselor's comment.
That's what I'm asking, so you're, I'm in favor of that, your worship.
Okay, now, just so we have concurrence, excuse me, please, just so we have concurrence, a suggestion on the floor by the secondar, is that we ask, we ask for the qualification before the submission. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay, now, to that point...
Mr. Mayor, this council doesn't meet again before May first.
We can give direction to staff.
Sure.
That's what they're talking about.
So they give, I'm not pulling for this anyway, but you give direction to staff to what? Submit it with the theater or ask about the theater, and if the theater doesn't fly, take the theater out?
Counselor Thompson?
Wow, okay.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I think what I was going to say was, I mean, everyone standing around saying, well, I don't know if this will work, I don't know if this will. Well, let's take some time. We still have three more days before the application is due, and we can find out. But I think Mr. Grun, your worship, wanted to say a word. Perhaps we can have him back up here.
Just quickly, first of all, to put a theater into a non-for-profit entity costs me about a thousand dollars and takes my lawyer about a day. The second comment I'd like to make is that many communities have, have contributed property and lands and different things to make a local theater, and either the BIA or a charity, of which Gypsy Theater, who's moving into the theater, is a charity and has already operated a theater for many years on a non-for-profit basis without a negative operating cash flow that has to be necessarily attributed to the city. And the BIA can essentially enter into an agreement to cover any negative operating cash flow on that facility if they deem to. The second point I'd like to make is, and this is the more important point, is, is that, you know, the, the real cost of street beautification properly done is in excess of this two point six million dollars. Staff has done work that costs roughly five hundred thousand dollars a block to do, and staff has such a plan and action. And so if staff verifies that the theater is not likely to be a component that they can go forward with, we certainly can beef up the beautification to really take the beautification to the level that it should be with possible funding. So it can sort of be an either-or possibility.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, what's that? Okay, see, we're talking about a completely different motion than, than Mr. Grun, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just putting, I'm just putting out the possibility.
Fine, just a different motion. I have Counselor Aiononi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's like we're debating this on the fly. We're going to flip his application on the fly. Staff's going to change his application on the fly. I want to go over a couple of things staff have covered. We passed two budgets tonight. We talked about, through this whole budget deliberation, that we were going to sell every ounce of public property we can to generate revenue, and we're going to look at purchasing a two point three million dollar theater. But what I found even, even more...
Well, excuse me, I don't think we're going to purchase, nobody's going to purchase a theater.
He said he was going to flip the, not purchase, flip it. So we're going to get it for what? Because, wait a second.
Not necessarily, excuse me, not...
I'm speaking.
Yes, I understand you are, but you've got some misinformation.
Let me, let me talk to you what he said. He talked about creative ways to switching it over to us, that he, that we should take the chance, and he would do it either nonprofit or a charitable status, which, by the way, takes far more than a couple of days. We have created charitable status committees. Your clerk will tell you, it's a long, drawn-out process. Let's talk about other things that this council hasn't discussed. An operational budget for a theater, should this go past and the, and the city owns it. Our staff is telling us that doesn't work. Stratford Theater is in the news every day, that it's floundering, they're canceling shows, they're laying off performers because they're not making the money either. Mr. Grun spoke about two things. He talked about the decrepitation of downtown and the decrepitation of Main and Ferry. Well, let's go to there for a second, because this isn't the only thing in front of us. Counselor Wing highlighted that Sylvia Place is the fourth most cost-saving initiative on this piece of paper. We just invested two, two million something into the museum. That's going to create a brand-new museum there. So not only looking at something like Sylvia Place, we would be increasing our own equity and creating a better building, we would be augmenting the two million dollars that this council saw fit to borrow to do a new museum. It would also clear up the prostitution problem that's down there by strictly putting a legitimate use to view an illegitimate use thereby, and the police department will tell you, just graduated Sep- Ted Advance Two, that that would move your illegitimate use out of a place with more population to, and it's just going to displace it somewhere else. But it would certainly clean it up for the new owners of the hotel across the street and the museum that has a problem, and all the hotel owners on that street. It seems to me that we're looking to push through anything downtown at any cost. It doesn't matter what it is. So I would suggest to the Main and Ferry BIAs and the other BIAs that they should create committees of council, because it really seems to have worked for this BIA. Because it doesn't matter what's before us. There's always a meeting prior to this council meeting, too. I find that remarkable, that every time there's a downtown issue on here, there's a pre-council committee meeting downstairs, so the direction comes from that committee. This is trying to push through something just for the sake of doing it. We have other projects on this piece of paper that will not only save us money, but augment other investments we have, such as the Sylvia Place. I'm going to vote against this. I think we're looking at unknown operational costs, unknown legal costs, and it crushes me to be on camera so that our federal member can look and think that we're going to look at creative ways to fix the, the potential ownership of that theater. That was all done on camera. Isn't that beautiful? This is asinine.
Counselor Carrio, Counselor Thompson?
Your worship, just to reiterate, I don't want to own a theater. I don't want the taxpayers to own a theater, whether they give it to us or not. I'd be prepared to support their roads, their landscaping, their Eastern Gateway, their Western Gateway. I don't think it's right for us to be proposing a theater. It just doesn't fit with everything else we talked about, and especially the way this transpired tonight. So I'm, if the theater's staying in, I'm sorry to the downtown people, I cannot support it. I would support you if the theater came out. You'd have my vote if you took the theater out. If it stays in, I can't vote for the theater.
Counselor Thompson?
Well, the main thing is, I want to see something happen positive for the downtown, and I, I don't know, every time I listen to Counselor Aiononi, it wouldn't matter whether the whole downtown was going to be paid for by some entrepreneur, she'd be against it. So it doesn't really impress me with the comments that she makes with respect to this. We have a responsibility, not just for servicing sewers and water, we have a responsibility to look after this community and to make it move forward and to make it a positive and constructive place in which to live. We've done the same for Main and Ferry. We, we all supported it. We think it's wonderful what's going up there and what's happening, the development. Hopefully, we can move, move ahead quickly with, with the expansion to the market. We're spending five point seven million dollars in infrastructure up there in the next two years before the 2012, and I think we're playing our role there, but we still can't close our eyes and, and think that we don't have a responsibility downtown. I can't believe that, that we look at this as, as a liability. This was, without exception, at one point, the most vibrant place in this municipality on a Thursday night. You couldn't even walk on the sidewalk. Do I think that'll come back in the future? I, I would hope so, but I think we got the components working, and with this particular opportunity from the federal government, I, I think, Jim, we have to take out the theater at this point, or else we may be in jeopardy with respect to the, the whole project. And I think we have a responsibility that we have to, we can't stand on one leg, we have to walk with two legs, and we have to look at all aspects of our, our community. And I think that this is a responsible decision, and I think we're doing the right thing to support and get the downtown, because I think this will make the difference between success and failure, which could, which could still come.
I agree. I think Counselor, I think Counselor Thompson has a good point, and I wouldn't want to put this project in jeopardy now. I want to just clarify for the sake of all the members of council, that Mr. Grun just made a comment, and I don't know, I didn't interpret that comment as the city would be taking title to that theater. So, Mr. Grun, do you want to qualify that, please, so for the benefit of all the councilors here?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the information of councilmembers, Gypsy Theater, which is a non-for-profit entity in existence, already has booked and taken over management and operation of the theater. So there's an existing charity that's in place that is already operating the theater as we speak. And they essentially, and we would be putting this into a non-for-profit entity. Nobody's expecting the city to assume any liabilities from an operational perspective on this theater. We would present it to the BIA, and I think the BIA would be extremely supportive to lending any funding to make the viability of the theater. So certainly, nobody's looking at the city becoming an operator or an owner of a theater, accepting any liability of operating or owning of a theater. And certainly, we have the charity, and the programming is already booked. Narnia is going to be in before the Christmas holiday, and we have a whole season of shows booked. The flyers are actually presently going to be delivered, and they'll be in your mailbox gonna be delivered, and they'll be in your mailbox in the next couple of days of the programming, they bring us all the way forward till January, so...
Thank you for qualifying that. Now, Counselor DiDaddy?
Your worship, I heard the counselor speak, and I do wanna say a couple of things. First of all, hats off to Counselor Carrio, you know, Counselor Carrio took the time to go downtown last week, and saw what we were talking about today, and I have a lot of respect for someone's opinion, when they're willing to go and investigate, even though maybe it wasn't on the top of his priority list, he took the time to do that. And I'm not prepared to throw the baby out with the bathwater, I know some people, unfortunately, are allergic to downtown, and it doesn't matter if, you know, Mr. Grun was handing out gold bricks, you know, they complained they were too heavy, or they, you know, they complained I had to pay taxes on them, or they were only 18 karat. And your worship, I think that what's most important is this council rallies behind some willing participants, we've got a lot of excitement, and there's, without a doubt, we've got a lot of exciting opportunities right in front of us, and I'm willing to amend my motion, your worship, just to remove the 2.3 from the theater. I do appreciate the support of those around this council for, you know, like, it's like being allergic to your hand, your worship, I mean, it's part of your body, you gotta get along with it, and I think that would be best to go along with it.
Counselor, I appreciate your suggestion, and I think the Seconder's agreeing, and I think it's good advice, I have reservations, because this was somebody just came up since the weekend, this last week, but I think that we have a better chance, and I certainly do support downtown and redevelopment, as you know, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to forego that. So, counsel, we've had good debate, is there further comment? Counselor Wing?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to respond to something Counselor Thompson said. He brought up Main and Ferry BIA, for not throwing all kinds of money into that area. You know, if I look at the Queen Street proposed items, you know, I see things like trees, and benches, and waste receptacles, and festivals and events, and landmarks, and street signs, and street directories, those are things that every other BIA in the city funds. I mean, I sit on Lundy's Lane, and I see them, you know, planning for their own street signs, I see them publishing their own directory, I see them, you know, considering putting money toward a heritage landmark, I see them putting in their own waste receptacles, their own benches, you know, I know that streetscaping and trees are part of what Main and Ferry's been saving money and is going to do. And what the city is going to do in the Main and Ferry area is renew the in-ground infrastructure, you know, I can tell you that the city has never put a water main, you know, Main Street between Robinson and Ferry. The water main that's there in the ground now was inherited from the village of Niagara Falls, which ceased to exist in 1904, and it wasn't brand-new, and it was inherited either. So, you know, we're not putting all kinds of money into there, all we're doing is renewing the infrastructure that is well past its lifespan, and I know that it's failing. I'd like to remind the council that on both February 23rd and last meeting, there was a report from staff on the proposed beautification and streetscaping for Queen Street, and in there, it talked about the storm sewer, it pointed out that the replacement of storm sewers was implemented, and the water main was largely replaced out here, as part of the streetscape improvements carried out in the 1980s. But there's concerns about the sanitary sewer, and it's suspected that it's contributing to the road surface cracking, and without that sanitary sewer being replaced in the short term, the city's taking a risk that beautification taking place now may be required to dug up in the future. I mean, that's why Main and Ferry didn't want to go ahead and do its streetscaping. It was ready to start this year, and it didn't wanna go ahead and start and have it dug up in a few years, because, you know, finally, the money was there to do the infrastructure, wanted the infrastructure in-ground to be done first, put the streetscaping on at the same time, you know, there's all kinds of cost efficiencies to be achieved, and you don't go and dig something up that's only a few years old. Well, Queen Street's trying to head the opposite way, you know, the one thing I would dearly love to support right now for Queen Street is that new sanitary sewer. That's, you know, you do the in-ground work first, then you do all the pretty stuff after it, and that's not even in here, but, you know, if we wanna talk about, and Counselor Carrio talked about fiscal responsibility, and, you know, getting the biggest bang for the buck for the taxpayer, saving the most for the taxpayer you can, well, you know, the motion that's on the floor now doesn't go that way. The item that would be next up in terms of being fiscally responsible would be going ahead with those transit coaches, there's $2.1 million, according to the figures staff gave us, to be achieved there, and the next place after that's the Sylvia Place Market redevelopment, $2 million to be saved there, according to the figures the staff gave us. So, if you wanna get the biggest bang for your buck, do what's most fiscally responsible, you go for projects that you know absolutely fit the bill, projects that are going to have to be done anyhow. Sorry, but we also own that marketplace, it doesn't belong to the Main and Ferry BIA, even though it was, you know, earmarked as a key part of the revitalization there, the BIA can't do anything with it, doesn't own the market, the city does. It dates back to 1968, it needs renewal. You know, we have to do what, you know, the transit coaches, I mean, we need more transit coaches, we need to renew the fleet, we own that fleet, we need to renew it, we're supposedly trying to expand and enhance our transit, you know, those are costs that can't be avoided, things that are beautification, and not even in Tab 8 of the capital budget, you know, those aren't in the same ballpark, we need to look, you know, why so many don't care about trying to get all the bang for our buck we can for our sewers, which we cannot avoid, unless we're gonna tell certain areas of the city that we don't care about their sewers, we can't avoid those costs down the road, and I'm trying to approach this from, how do we save the most money, not just this year, but in future years, for the taxpayer? And the motion that's on the floor now does not support that objective, I would be happy to escort the next one down the list, or the one after that, or the one after that, but what's on the floor now is not that.
Thank you, any other comments? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, well, I have to respond, because, first of all, anything that has come here in the past with respect to Main and Ferry has been, I have personally supported, and so has the council, so I don't know what all the preamble was there. And to suggest that this is not an economic development opportunity for the downtown area, for job creation, that's what it's all about, we're trying to put people back to work, opening up more shops, opening more stores, more restaurants, all of the work that has gone ahead, that's where we're gonna get some money, that's where we're gonna get some tax return, that's where we're gonna get the revenue to do some of the other things, and it has to be done, so I have no problem with that.
Thank you, Counselor Carrio?
I'm just in an argumentative mood tonight, so I'm gonna make a comment as well. I don't think that by supporting this project over others is stating that we're not interested in supporting the others. We've all been supportive of the others, I continue to be supportive of the others, just happen to think that this is a good project, and I'm prepared to support it without the theater in it, that all the projects here, it's unfortunate that we're put in this position, I would've liked to have been able to support all the projects that are on the list. Unfortunately, we can't, we can only pick four, so I think if we pick this one, we've got four good ones, and we go with them, we all get behind them, and then we all lobby our provincial member and our federal member, and make them all happen.
Okay, I have Counselor Iannone, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll make my comments without taking cheap shots at fellow counselors, because I thought we were well past that, and I thought the point of debate was to put our opinions forward, well, some of us rise above. When I started my discussion, and my points of view on this, I said I was prepared to support this until the theater came in. I mean, I think we're all in the same room, we all heard that. I have problems with talking about creative accounting on camera, with everybody watching, and then it's going to go to a federal department that's gonna say, "Wait a second, you had your staff telling you not to do this." Just as Counselor Thompson and Carrio say, you support everything else in Main and Ferry and the other BIAs, we all do, but I think they'd rather see us supported with dollars, and we've been lax compared to what we've supported elsewhere, to what we've supported here, I mean, you can stand up with your backs up, but the facts are facts. And to take cheap shots on what you support down here, you can't find one CIP project that Counselor Wing and I, who voted inside by side on everything on this, by the way, which we won't tonight, and we've supported every one of them. I'm gonna stick to my campaign, which I don't forget, two and a half, three years in, and I said I would stick to CIP dollars, and that's what I would support. So, it doesn't make me a liar, it makes me have a different opinion than you, and I'm not gonna stand here and take cheap shots at you for it, but I think...
Excuse me. Okay, we don't have to get personal, thank you, members of council, please, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I would just like to say, I mean, I hope that this motion goes through, and if it does, I'll be very happy with what we've accomplished here tonight. I think going around the room, you know, any one of us would've had perhaps four different projects than the other person, but when you take a look at the whole of what we've done so far tonight, I mean, you know, we've approved a project for a community group that has been long waiting for a new facility, and long deserving of it, we've gone ahead with two major infrastructure projects that, in total, equal more than $10 million, and now we're looking at helping out our downtown, which is just simply following through on a commitment that we've already made, and hoping to disperse some economic development. And your worship, now is the time, we can't really back out on this bargain that we have with them. I've also done some number crunching, your worship, and I know Counselor Thompson had the question before, where are we gonna come up with the money? The way I look at it, your worship, is the city's gonna have to come up with a portion of $8.5 million, if you take off the $2 million that's coming from the Boys and Girls Club, the $2 million that is freed up in the operating budget from German Road not going forward this year, and also the $0.5 million that we've already committed for downtown, we're looking at only putting in, your worship, $4 million, and we're asking for $25.3 million of work to be done. For $4 million, your worship, I think that's a pretty good bang for our buck, so I think we've done a pretty good job here tonight.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the comment, it's positive. Now, members of council, I just, once again, wanted to ask to clarify the motion, and I wanna ask clerk, I'm sorry, the Director of Public Works to qualify the amount, so, Mr. Clerk, would you?
We'll get the clarification.
Okay, the amount, as for the motion?
Yes, your worship. I'm not the Director of Public Works.
No, sorry, I'm sorry, that's right, sorry.
Anyways, well, it goes with the map, but I think just if you look at this project alone, if we go without the theater, it's the $2.7 million, city already has the $5.18, $5.19, so you're looking at another $3.80, $381,000 in addition, that the city would have to come up to fund that $2.7 million.
Okay, that's clear? Okay, and Mr. Clerk, could you just qualify the motion, please?
Yeah, the motion would be to put forward the downtown streetscaping project as submitted by the downtown, minus the theater component, for consideration for the federal and provincial infrastructure stimulus programs.
Okay, and my apologies, we did have the Executive Director of Community Services qualify that, so thank you. And just having said that, Counselor Peter Angelo?
I have just one other clarification, your worship, I guess, through yourself to Mr. Doolittle, there's two funds that we're applying for, one is the Infrastructure Stimulus Fund, and the other is the Build Canada Fund. The Build Canada Fund, if we go on the notional basis of per capita, then our allowance in that fund is about $1.8, $1.9 million, is that what it is? Because it's $6.25, it's not $6.25,000.
Mr. Doolittle?
Your worship, yes, as I commented the other night, and again, this goes to notional spending, so, yeah, I think for the ISF, you're talking $5.55, which is the $15 million. So, from staff's perspective, I think we'll be looking for the bigger projects for the ISF funding, and this one being the smallest of the four, we would do through the BCF application process. But that's something staff will work on as we make the application, staff is the way it has, your worship.
And we won't preclude ourselves by, you know, not getting the right fund. Okay, you ready for the vote? We have requested recorded vote, is that correct? Yes or no? No? Okay, then, all right, no, all right, then, recorded? Okay, recorded vote? Counselor DiDaddy?
Four.
Counselor Fisher?
Four.
Counselor Iannone?
Four.
Counselor Carrio?
Four.
Counselor Maves?
Four.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Four.
Counselor Thompson?
Four.
Counselor Wing?
Opposed.
Mayor Selsey?
Four.
It passes? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Of course, you introduce the bylaws.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Just the motion again to introduce the bylaws, bylaws to give them a first reading, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor DiDaddy. Once again...
Are you in additional bylaws?
Yes.
Not an additional bylaw, but the water and sewer bylaw will obviously have to be changed to reflect the motion earlier related to the German Road project, so we're asking for approval of that bylaw, but there'll be some technical changes to it.
Okay, with the idea that we can amend that bylaw, members of council, is that clarified? Okay? So, once again, council's heard the motion, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor?
Bylaws 2009-69 and 2009-70, write a first time.
Good, now, I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, and seconded by Counselor DiDaddy. Once again, council's heard the motion, any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor?
Bylaws 2009-69 and 2009-70, write a second and third time and pass.
Any new business, members of council? Not? Motion adjourned, moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Maves, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much.
I should remind you that if we need more...